Good evening, this is the July 14th, 2015 special meeting of the city council. We are here tonight.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember Huffner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
We have tonight some discussion directions on the comp plan. I have a couple of preliminary comments to make before we get into this. Rob's a car. That's completely. Tagged you this both there, but. There's going to be three parts to the meetings. One is the staff presentation. One is the council discussions. Of the elements that we're talking about tonight, and there will be public comment after that to comment upon some of the things that. Heard and some additional. If whatever else the public might be interested in providing to us. And we can talk about that later. I want to lay some concerns that I've heard from riding people in the community. Both about process and persistent. This is another step in the process. It's an important step, but it's another step in the process. It's not the last achievements to have input by. I appreciate, and I think all of us appreciate, the comments that we have received, calls. Emails, texts, messages, and. Other kinds of communications that we've received, the staff has received. Very much appreciated. Just because you happen to hear your comment. Come out of somebody's mouth tonight doesn't mean it's not important. It doesn't mean it's not going to end up in a. Later version of our complaint, because I just wanted to. The additional information to incorporate. At the same time, we're not getting the process. There's been a very, very extensive public process that Rob. Touch on and. We're. Proceeding, you know, I think of it often, the policy processes, the fund down at the bottom. These are. Starts with a whole bunch of input and we gradually. Shake it out, talk about it, refine it, or we get something that is, I think. Hopefully very useful for the. Representative of as much as we can.
Mr. Ray, could you speak up please?
I can do that.
Thank you, sir.
So. You know, that process is going to continue to include. Information that we're going to be talking about tonight and other information as we have additional public process. And we're not at the beginning of that process by any means. We aren't going to get there. But it's one to get there on its own timeframe. And that's something the council is in charge of, but we are. Do what we need to do to get there with an appropriate level of input from folks and appropriate level. Of discussion by council. And what we're not going to do is to split up. The comp plan like we did the last, so we will not have chunks that will be voting on. As as it goes forward, we'll have a full plan. The other thing about it is just something to be mindful of. Not everybody is going to be happy with the results that we reach. And that is always true in a representative process like we have here. You have elected us as council members to do our very best to do what's right for Louisville. And I think we do that. And I think the kind of process we follow is a good one, but it's not going to end tonight. Substantively, the documents that we're reviewing. Rob, touch on this is. Is what? It's a preliminary internal branch. It's by no means anywhere close to being complete. And that has scared some people. They think that, oh my gosh, we're almost at the end of that draft. No, we're not. And Rob can tell you exactly where we are on that. What we've done is actually provide more opportunities for public input, not less. On that, but we got a document that is rough. You'll you'll hear that a little bit. So the final thing is just to talk. To counsel for just a second. What I'd like to do tonight is to avoid doing a lot of wordsmithing and. Will be doing a big more, hopefully staying at a bit higher level. So that we don't get mired. Too much. On restructuring and so forth. You know how we might change the topic or form the topic into another. If you can avoid repetition, that would be good. Don't all have to echo everything somebody else says. I'm going to try to do that through the votes and process a bit. Just sort of move us through that. Views with that.
All right, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen, so I'm going to be sharing a lot of information here, so let me get that going. There we go. So, yeah, thank you for the introduction. This is a continuation of our first discussion, as you all know. And as you said, Mayor Lay, you know, council asked to see, you know, the first rough draft we got from our consultants. So we acknowledge and recognize. You know, this, this was a draft that needs a lot of just wordsmithing and revisions. You know, we are in the process of that, both planning staff, every department in the city. We're all doing a deep dive review. We're working with consultants to write and redraft sections for clarity and consistency and accuracy. There were a lot of comments about, well, there's some land use bubbles going over parks and open space. There's, there's no intention to rezone or change any of those land uses to park or open space. That's just a. You know, the result of this being a really first rough draft and, you know, the land use plan, we're trying to do. A kind of bubbles and not property specific. So that all that needs some work, so I appreciate you acknowledging that. Again, initially, we intended that this would be a staff review draft. We come out with the clean version for council and community. We're still going to do that, and I'll talk a little bit detail about how that play out. You know, depending on the type of feedback and extent of revisions that might come out of this evening. But there's the three ball points up here. So again, we started the review and we started with vision for values. And I think we, we were able to get that review completed. Again, doesn't mean the vision for values can't change. There's going to be multiple additional review sessions with planning commission, public, city council, everybody. We did a pretty deep dive into the future land use map. And there were some good comments from council. I think council definitely wanted to have more refined maps that showed side by side of what exists now versus what's being proposed. So we did provide that as a link in the packet, so there's side by side maps for all of our focus areas. We brought in open space advisory boards. Open space map as a side by side as well, so we'll, we'll do, we'll look at that in a lot more detail as well. And then the last thing is the plant elements, focus areas, golden strategy. We haven't started that review, so we're hoping to get into that tonight as well. So again, we had a link to those comparison maps, the last packet. And then I just wanted to go down and also highlight all of the public input we've had, and we did this last time. But we, you know, we've had a year and a half of engagement on this. We've heard from over 2,000 residents, a lot of, a lot of consistent feedback, but a lot of different opinions as well. So we, we really linked this time to all of the summary documents that we have on our Engage Louisville platform, the project website. We've got some summary documents, input from the public meetings. We have gone to all of our boards and commissions twice to engage and get feedback, including on the strategies that we're going to be looking at tonight. We had some youth engagement. We also had focus groups at the very beginning, so we had residents and others. Landowners, developers also to kind of give their feedback on, you know, what we could do in this comprehensive plan. Again, this is a 10-year comprehensive plan. We do this every 10 years, we update it, it's a 20-year vision. So when we're thinking about all of these things. This is what we want the city, we want, this is how we want the city to develop over the next 20 years. And as far as specific implementation, the focus should probably be a little more on the 10-year timeframe. As we're going through, so that's the lens that we're bringing. Here's just kind of a flow chart summary of everything that we've done, kind of starting on the right with the blue and then making a counterclockwise circle around. So this is all the 48 touch points that we've had. We had a resident survey with almost 2,000 respondents, so really great turnout. We've had five top up events, two public open houses. 17 meetings with boards and commissions and so forth. So there's been, again, a lot of public input. So again, we're trying to distill that to, to this plan. And again, like you said, Mayor, not everybody's going to agree with everything, but we're trying to capture as best we can on the community vision. So we're kind of down at this process here where city councils initiated this review. As you all know, the planning commission is your designated advisory board for this plan. They're charged with reviewing and making a recommendation to you. So of course, staff and consultants doing a lot of the, the legwork, but you know, they are a big part of this process. We've had a lot of engagements, touch points with them, and we're hoping to get to that next stage as well. Last time we met, we had this review schedule. It kind of took us to September, I think, with slowing down the review a little bit and doing this, this new step with the deep dive. We have an alternative schedule here, and again, this depends on how far we get through tonight. Where, you know, if we're able to. Get to the point where we can get back to our consultants and work on the next version of the draft. We would try to take that back to planning commission in August and also have a public open house. So we'd have a new draft that would be published with all of the feedback that we're getting from council. For those reviews in August, and then we'd have another review in council with council in September. Of that draft as well, we'd have more public feedback. If things are still on track, then we'd start the adoption process, so that could potentially take place in October. You know, certainly this is open to change, but that's kind of where we're at right now if we continue to move forward pretty aggressively to, to get this done. So with that, I want to see if there's any questions. If not, I think we can go into the land use map review, if you're ready for that. Okay, so let me. Find tab here. Okay, so I'm just going to orient you a little bit. So what, what we did is we, we have the whole city and we. We have comparisons, so on the left here, we have our current zoning districts. And then over here is the proposed future land use map, so we've made a comparison there. And then we also have a map that is current land, so land use and zoning aren't the same. So you know, you can have vacant properties or other designations that are much more broad than the actual zoning. So these are categories like we'll lump all of the. You know, we'll lump all of the, a lot of the commercial types together, but with the zoning, we might have really a few different like office type zones or commercial type zones. So it gets lumped together and land use, and then we have that comparison. And then, as you know, we're focusing in on what we're calling these opportunity areas. So we've made all of those comparisons for each opportunity area. We have the downtown area. Where we're preparing zoning, existing land use to the proposed future land use map. And then we go into Centennial Valley off around Kazlin. And then we have the Redtail Ridge area, which also included the Vista Hospital property. And then we go into the South Boulder Road corridor. We have all those same maps, and then we have the 2023 Open Space Advisory Board where they have. Priority properties, so we wanted to make sure for your request that you could kind of see those side by side and see how those lined up with the land use map. So I also wanted to mention that. You know, zoning and this land use map, they're, they're very different. The purpose of this land use map is to give broad policy direction for council staff, property owners in the future. It's not regulatory, it's meant as a guide, so we're trying to provide purposely. Through how we're drawing this map and how we're describing the different land uses to provide flexibility. So there's some categories that you'll see that have a mix of residential and commercial uses. And so those, any of those could potentially be appropriate with, as future developments come in. Or as we update our land development code, which is a project that we already have slated for next year, so just keep that in mind. So, so with that, I thought the best way to do this is to go. Area by area and then just open it up to council to see if you have things on. Well, if you have questions, certainly we'll do our best to answer the questions. But then really get from council, are there any of these land use categories on the future land use map? Over here that you would like edited or changed? And, you know, for efficiency too, if council, if there's a proposal coming from council, you know, pretty quickly seeing if you all want to engage in it. Because if there's not the majority or consensus that want to engage in it, you probably want to move on for efficiency. So I'm just going to start with the downtown area. And I'm going to bring up the current land uses. Here on the left, and they're all labeled. And then the proposed land use. And, you know, some of the big changes within downtown that are shown here. Are, you know, bringing more of this neighborhood center south of Pine Street. That's more of a mixed district. Right now, it's mostly housing, it's zone for housing, it's not really zone for commercials, so that would be opening up potentially some more commercial here. But also potentially some different housing types that might be allowed. You know, going to town home or maybe even apartment densities. This is industrial over here, here it's that neighborhood commercial. Those are probably the biggest changes here, so I'll stop there and see if there's questions or comments. And Jeff, if you'd like.
I did want to add actually to clarify that the, the previously with the Highway 42 revitalization plan, it has a double sub area, may be smart. This aligns with that generally, so for a changed perspective, we would be minimal, it's just a higher level of characterization of those things.
If you. Wait out in there just for his sake.
Yeah, so South Boulder Road is actually just north and off of this map, so. Just to try to orient everybody, so, so this, these are, this is the railroad track here. We've got Highway 42. We've got the. This is Pine Street. Right here. And then kind of the commercial core of downtown. And, you know, those are the baseball fields there, that's miners field there. That helps orient everybody.
What's the, can you remind us the difference between mixed neighborhood and neighborhood center?
Do you want to custom, have you tested?
We have a little sort of. Yeah. The full table of cases.
Yeah, and if you want to ask, you want to.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, if we, once you get this sheet here, it sort of scales from lowest intensity to highest intensity. Once you get to kind of the public categories. But from, I think the question was mixed use residential relative to neighborhood center, is that right?
Yeah, mixed, mixed neighborhood with neighborhood center.
Yeah, yeah, the terminology still has a bit of anything there. And then you come to the uses and sort of density and intensity, so mixed use residential, if we know, bone of one, and that would be designed to be predominantly residential, so town homes. Duplexes, things like that, but the occasional opportunity to like pocket sort of neighborhood circle retail, like control and coffee shop or something on a properly corner. So the, the non-residential is really diminished than the mixed use residential. And then you go to neighborhood center, it's just slightly more residential density, slightly taller buildings allowed, slightly more non-revolution pieces.
And mixed use residential is the same as this neighborhood of this town?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's brown, it's a brown, yeah.
Wouldn't it be possible to put that in full screen so maybe see it back here?
I don't know if I can do that on this flat version, but I, I could, I could certainly cut it to the end here.
Rob, if you open it in the app, it might open in Adobe.
Yeah, I can open it.
If you just hit the open up at the, towards the top right.
Boy, he's doing that, the downtown. The markation on our legend, where does that correspond to in this part? Of downtown, here it is, same say.
Yeah, so that's kind of the commercial, or that's the commercial core downtown. Big followers would be worried.
Oh, right. And. Downtown designation as residential. For, could you? Give us a sense for how between the very rural units per acre. There's something being made for the fact down there.
So I, I would go to D-Lo, so I mean, if you're just, that's kind of a three-story density. So if you do a residential mixed use up to three stories. That's probably the range that we're looking at there. Depends on how much parking you have. But as far as the physical form of the building, it's kind of a three-story either residential. Now, in downtown, vision isn't to have three-story residential, it's, but you could have a mix. Here, here's one of the things we heard from the public input, we actually heard this from planning commission, was in the commercial core downtown. They weren't, you know, we looked at the downtown design guidelines. Which is very different than the mixed use zoning overlay in D-Lo. So that allows kind of more uniform, three-story, higher density in the D-Lo side. At least the feedback we got from a lot of the community and the planning commission with downtown should still be maintained as a mix. There's, there might be some three-story, but it shouldn't be predominantly three-story in downtown. So, you know, this is a, you know, these descriptions don't necessarily reflect that, but we want to make sure that's acknowledged.
Do you think we'll flesh out that a little bit more in the description for?
I think we have the opportunity to, for sure. I think that's important to be clear that, and I think there's actually, if you get into the strategy language, I think there's strategies that specifically state that already.
I think it's also just important to keep that going, that the development credit base happening right after this, and a lot of those people live there as well, yeah.
Yeah, and I think in the, the descriptions in the plan, we'll add description in the land use classification descriptions, which I just took down in order to. So we'll, we'll get, but I, I can open those up and we can go over those again, but yeah, we'll clarify it in there as well. So the downtown design standards contemplate, basically, they say that there, there's what we call the core of downtown and the transition area of downtown. And our policy currently is within the commercial core. That there should be a mix of. One, two, and three stories, and the one story should be tall, kind of false front, it's a very unique district, so. So the desire has always been that there should be limited three-story in downtown, and it's, it's based on the context of where you're at. And if there's a three-story, it has to be subordinate to the other two, so there's always. So again, I think the intent for downtown is, here's the big change that I think we're talking about now. Right now downtown, there's no residential buy right. So the thing that we heard is should we allow, it's, it's allowed through special review. But do we want to allow some mix if it's not on the ground floor, but it's maybe on upper stories and it's part of mixed use development? Do we want to allow some more residential downtown?
Then, so if someone wanted to. Build a residential structure behind your downtown business, I'd just get the special review, this would nice.
I mean, this land use map, again, is not regulatory, but it would, it would beat us, I don't think there's anything here that would beat us to. Say that's a, that's, that would be a very unique situation, I think, I, you know, there's not a lot of. Commercial core downtown property where you could build a residence in the back, so it'd be very unusual surface case.
But the idea is to still preserve what would be first floor through those streets as businesses.
Right. Yeah, so when we got into the land development code rewrite, we could further flush that out through an actual code or regulation. Just as an example, it could say that if you do residential, you know, you have to have a ground floor commercial, like that's the only. But if you do that, then maybe you get some buy right in that district, be one way to craft it.
Also, would you clarify the three-story thing? Nothing in this plan would change that we have, we already have those rules in place like the downtown. But I think we could add in there, soften it to like where appropriate, three stories where appropriate. And so we need to point us to those standards that say we don't want three stories everywhere, we want it only in select areas kind of.
Yeah, I think it's helpful that buddy should down with her RBR, so.
Yes, yeah, that's whatever it takes though.
Well, the thing that I think is maybe puzzling. Took owner's house, somebody who doesn't do this all. Is why, why we have to, I mean, comparing old uses to new uses makes sense. But why, why the change in terminology, why are you doing that?
There's, there's a few reasons. I think we're trying to use similar terminology, not to zoning, but to how we describe current land uses, which again are broader categories than the zoning. And I think we're also trying to, like, one of the things I think we saw with our last comprehensive plan is there was some desire to have more flexibility. And so we're trying to have broader categories where there's more flexibility for future decision. So, so, so with this one. You know, I, I would ask council if there are any proposals for changes to what we have here.
The locations of the various and definitions of. It just fits in with what we've got. Fits in with what we've got.
Could we just say, make sure that either in the definitions of the tonight's boarding strategies. Some of this discussion perhaps fleshed out. Then, then just have one more question, which is. The current name is map shows some industrial mixed use of light purple. Over across from ball fields, so higher is, and other places. Can you just step us through, I mean, I know this map is a regulatory, but assuming you change the zoning. It doesn't create a problem for the businesses that aren't there.
Right, so. So we have the mixed use overlay district. Which. So that there's a purposeful intent to rezone those properties in current policy, so, oh. That's part of the D-Lo develop, and it's the highway forty-two re-vitalization. Basically called for all the old industrial properties. Um, kind of between South Boulder Road and Pine Street, and and encourages them to redevelop. Um, through a mandatory rezoning, so those industrial businesses under current bus policy can stay as long as they want, they can make. Some improvements to the property, but if they, if there's a big redevelopment or change in use, they're supposed to rezone to the mixed use zoning. So, um, so there's, there's nothing here, if they want to stay. They could stay in perpetuity, the existing light industrial businesses. Um, but if they wanted to redevelop or expand, then it triggers that redevelopment, and all of that is surrounding the train, you know, the intent of having a train station. Here, which. Let, you know, if you've been following that, there's a lot of renewed efforts and funding to bring the train station. That's a lot, it's, it's impossible to understand.
But that, I mean, that answers the question, I guess. Cause they're casual observer, right, like we're changing these areas, and they're, you know, some of them are, are. What I would call community survey, right, like their business. I'm gonna let it give the, some impression that we're.
One, one question I have, um, if. Uh, look, yeah, I'm looking at the place where we have. It's just sort of just to the west of our water treatment line up there. Um, and that. Appears to be multifamily housing in greater flow, breed and retail, which is the definition of neighborhood center. Um, until, well. Most recent activity there was. I suppose it's sort of, maybe it was consistent with that, but it.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I, Ironton Distillery had plans there, but um, there's some likelihood they may not move forward with that. And then we've got a storage center, and we've got the old city shops there, and then the waste water treatment plant. So this is something that staff actually, I think it's flag in our review. Um, is, you know, maybe this should stay as light industrial. You know, how much flexibility, you know, how much flexibility do you want there? It could, you know, in all reality too, it may be an appropriate place for light industrial, considering there's. Uh, you know, a storage center and the old city shops are there, so that may not be a good place for housing.
Yeah, I, I mean. You don't typically quit house.
Right, right, but, yeah.
Um, although in point of fact, there probably will be some houses near light industrial. In the D-Lo areas, these businesses are safe.
Yeah, yeah.
That happens. I don't know, I mean, I guess it's a question, a big question. You know, whether there's, well, that's.
So we have the current city RV dump. Just to the north of where you have your little purple line right there, and that was something that came up. When Ironton was looking at purchasing the property, it very, very vocal portion of our community that RVs. And would like this to stay within our community, if that becomes residential. There is going to be a massive push from a developer to not have that there any longer. And I would not say that that is in the best interest of the community or what the residents have asked for, so from that perspective. Uh, it seems to like lend itself to what staff is suggesting, that that should save light industrial, save for businesses rather than. Being proposed as residential space.
And can I, and if I guess, so it might be, it might make sense to keep this eastern part of it as light industrial. And maybe even allow, have a little bit more allowance for commercial, where Ironton was gonna go. Which wouldn't be residential.
Right.
And there'd be, there'd be some less conflict, so maybe I propose that as a actual change.
Okay, everybody else, so then the word that's Lafayette property and then to the south, where's in the.
That's Mayhopper Open Space, is your. Lafayette, yeah, the Lafayette parcel, which is now open space, but Lafayette could develop sports complex, is basically. This section all through here, so there could be, you know, future ball fields in that.
I guess, you, you know, I, I just read the question, I'm not sure. Um, the, the nice part of that, the, the start of this potential housing, it is always kind of odd. To have uh, that facility, just sort of ease, right, and it made that make sense, but. It's a, it's a place, it's pretty close downtown, it's in the air. Um, you know, it's near transportation lines, I don't think, I, I think the RV dumping station is really important. I would have let that drive away, but. Just lose, I think that I want to, some of it, but, um. I just, you know, that, that was always in my head, an industrial place until I. Sent that, and then was like, oh, wait, that's interesting, and I don't know whether it's my.
Yeah, it sounds like staff have this applied, like I'm just very soon.
Yeah, I get, do any council members, would council members be interested in us maybe exploring some. Non-residential but non-industrial uses on a portion of that move of that. And that you can play with us some more.
I guess my comment would be. Like, why, why pigeonhole ourselves into this? This portion has to be light industrial, this portion can be commercial, like, if, if we're open to having some flexibility in that area. Um, why not try and designate it as something even broader? That could have, like, industrial and commercial and, right, I mean, if somebody wants to build residential, why? Uh, and they think it's compatible, that's, that's their decision, I, and the commercial I think of. For many years, Avery Brewing, right, was like in this weird back corner of an industrial park. And like you drove past a car wash and a self-storage and a metal fabricator, and it was this, it was this wonderful space. And I don't know how they got away with that zoning wise, but why, I think, sort of, why pigeonhole yourself into one use or another? And maybe it's a place to explore flexible designation.
And, and I agree with that, I think you have some flexibility. I just learned, you know, from that experience, it's just another reason to say, well, wait, that's not getting too. Descriptive, it's probably not exactly, but it is getting. Now, now, well, that's big too much, what are you thinking?
They can, you know, with Russo, they can overlap too, like, they can be two things. Yeah, you know, how we played it that, but some plans you've had before.
Doesn't cover commercial uses potentially, I mean, we, we do allow, like, right now in our zoning, commercial uses in the industrial are SR. That's our U.
Yeah.
But that could be addressed with the code re-repete to where it becomes more of a used by right, that's where, you know. We can't think of this as zoning either, so we could, um. But I, I, I mean, and I know this might be harder, but I think we've heard good input, we could take another traffic to the area for the next time without being. Overly specific of councils, am I seeing thumbs up on that?
I, the description of the flex office industrial district does say retail, light industrial and office, limited residential support employment retail. So it seems like the flex category is flex office industrial district.
It has everything, it's just a matter of what we want to make, is the condition of use and how much and everything else, so we're gonna have to try to make it be broad. Okay, so, if it's okay, I'll move on to the next.
Yep, okay. Is there any other?
No, I just want to be mindful of the open space that's surrounding that area.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go to Centennial Valley next. And I'm gonna go to the existing land use here, so again, existing land use, it's. Most of the areas covered by the general development, Centennial Valley General Development Plan. This property where the CU property is, is straight zone commercial, there's some straight zone commercial up here, pretty much everything else. Is covered by the general development plan, you know, we have hotels, we have offices, a lot of commercial on the corridor. All these gray areas are vacant properties that haven't, haven't developed. Um, other than, you know, Cinnabar, which is shown as vacant, it's unoccupied, but, um, and then I think. We actually have the, uh, what's gonna become the King Supers in Vegas, it's unoccupied, but all, all of this up here is actual vacant land. Hasn't developed, so, um, you know, th- there are some, some changes here. Um, that we talked about last time, that I'm gonna walk you through. Right now, it's all office under that general development, that's either commercial or office under that general development. So the, the idea here, and this is part of implementing the housing plan and trying to find areas for additional housing. Um. For all the reasons stated in the housing plan, um, there are some opportunities here for transit-oriented development, which would be a much more sustainable development pattern. Um, so for all those reasons that we've been hearing from the community and council, we're proposing some changes that wouldn't be straight office or commercial zoning. So we have, um. Uh, we have a couple of land use categories here, this brown here is mixed neighborhood. This is intended to be lower density residential, it's not single family, but it's supposed to go, supposed to be town home, row home type densities. So the idea is you transit from the existing single family to a little bit higher density with row homes and town homes. Once you got down to the southern part, maybe you could have a park type though, so this provides flexibility with that. The, this neighborhood center, which is this pink color. Um, is a higher density, it's envisioned to be mostly apartments, but it have mixed commercial in with it. Three-story maximum. And then these purple areas are existing offices, so we're just kind of leaving that as it, we, we don't think there's. A lot of demand for those to change over, but. Um, and then there's the commercial core here, where there's a lot of existing commercial. And then we have the regional center, so that's the, um, the old Cinnabar site that CU owns, it's the other side of McHastlin as well. Where there's pretty even higher density mixed use development, this is around the transit center, so the idea of a. Little bit higher density around the transit center to help support that. Um, and then over here, we've got more mixed neighborhood where there's some existing. Existing residential, higher density residential. Um, and office uses over here, so providing some more flexibility there as well. So, there's a lot of changes from what you see here, again, on existing land use, we've got. Residential here, office here, mixed commercial and office. So. That's a lot. And, and there's some big changes here, you know, like here's a point where we accidentally overlay over some open space, like we'll place that. Um, the also, it's actually not shown here, but we actually wanted to put a different color here. For a, uh. You know, some type of community facility or park, we're creating a new neighborhood here, we want to make sure there's a central gathering space or a park that's in the center of this neighborhood as well. Um, I think that color isn't showing us there, but that's supposed to be there.
Supposed to be up to there.
Yeah.
Wrong, I, well, go ahead.
No, no, I said more than I.
Um, let me find out.
I just have a question on the, the southern NC part, just above the, where CU is going in.
Yeah.
Could we allow higher, uh, like, more than three stories? In that area, since it's so close to the, the transit center, and it's. It's not blocking anybody's view of anything.
Yeah, so, yeah, I didn't mention that, but this regional center says that we could allow more than three stories. Maybe up to four or five stories if it's adjacent to US thirty-six, what the policy says now. Um, if council, so, if council wants to change that regional center and extend it further north. We could, um, that effect could add more density to support the trans. So, so there's a proposal here too. Um, so I don't know, like, this is an opportunity where we can see if council has questions about that proposal. Or if there's kind of thumbs up, or you want more discussion, or thumbs down about extending that RC. Um, regional center into this part.
No, I think we've already got some two and three-story commercial buildings in there, and I think in keeping with that. And given that there's actually is an upslope, kind of when you're in that from McHastlin going up. I think having that density closer to thirty-six would be something that the community would feel comfortable with. I think putting that in here, I think it should maybe be a special exception that we would look at, but not necessarily. That it's part of this, I, I have not been to any of these yet, and brought, maybe, please correct me if I'm wrong, where residents have. Put the big stickers in the middle of Centennial Valley, saying that they like the idea of, you know, five-story buildings going in there. I've seen them along the McHastlin corridor, I'm sorry, about on thirty-six corridor. Lower, but not through, um, Centennial Valley, that's not what I've heard.
Yeah, I would say the, the public input, and again, I don't know. Exactly where all the stickers went for the higher density, there could be some stickers there, there may not be stickers there. Um, but I do know that there was more support for higher building heights, the closer you got to thirty-six. So it's just how, you know, how much of that transitionary?
My question, um, this was one of our current, just mentioned that I've heard it. A few other folks, but you, but I don't see it here, the five-story. Richard needs, so where would it fall in there?
Right, so that, that's under, um. Regional center, so it's actually yellow on, it's actually kind of a yellow mustard color on your sheet. Yeah, so if you go over the density and scale, it says up to five stories in some locations adjacent.
Five, who are the towns?
Yes.
There isn't anything yellow in this area.
Yeah, and there are existing office buildings there, and then, you know, over here we have the Cinnabar hotels. Um, you know, the commercial center, where there's a lot of existing, you know, and again, just. Even this color, I think, assumes some transition in density.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that would have to be the case. If this were considered. Something like so hard.
No, this wouldn't be all the way.
I know, but I'm even anywhere over.
And it's also residential, on to the south side of that park, those are families homes, it's just. Lewis, but it's unincorporated Boulder County, so that's something I think to consider, so it's not like spot. So, but there are still residents in there.
And this is open space.
I, I wanted to raise the question, but I don't know where it exactly fits. Um, but over in the Centennial Valley, I certainly have. Heard and certainly feel this way, south, but it might well be a good place for an arts and. And I don't know. Uh, where. Uh, where. Obviously, we don't, that might go um. And.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I, I think I'd want to, to have that.
Yeah, and we could, we could, we could bring that more forward in the plan document, but again, that color that's missing here. We were intending to say, hey, there needs to be some typing. It could be a park, it could be an art center. There could be a few, like, this, this shouldn't be limiting too. And um. You know, if you start looking at the secondary uses, especially a lot of them ha- including like neighborhood center, we just say community spaces, meeting facilities. So we're trying to recognize that if we're gonna have a new neighborhood here and there's gonna be a developer that comes in. I, I presume would be working with them on. Um, you know, how to make it feel like a neighborhood where there would be public spaces, maybe include that.
And, you know, you've got. You're gonna have greater density at least at this now.
Yeah.
Further south and. Where are you, you might cite that and how you develop that neighborhood is. And, you know, we're trying to visualize that for the future. What does that look like? And where our event is going to be.
Yeah.
Respect to.
Yeah, there's a, there is a, this is for later discussion. There's policies specific to this area. That's part of what you're saying, guys, or desire to limit it. I don't know, it's in one of the bubbles or somewhere else, so I didn't have that. Um, so this is one comment on the end uses, which is I understand that football flex can just reflect, assess it was already there. Um, you know, I think in the event that the adjacent thing uses gave into being. We might wanna allow more flexibility given than flex office. Um, to, to, not saying it's going to be, but to open the possibility that the residential might be. Over into those spaces a little more and maybe that's.
Yeah, so, so we, under that category, under secondary land uses, we do say limited residential to support employment.
Okay.
So that's in the description there.
Do you think that's broad enough?
I think it's broad enough that if somebody came in and it was adopted with that wording and they had a proposal that we, we wouldn't have to say, no, that's not consistent with.
It's not like to support employment of that particular, it's just as.
Yeah.
Everyone's people work somewhere, so.
Right, right, yeah.
So Rob, I have a question.
Right. I do.
So for the um, there's the parking lot between like the biodistics building and McDonald's. That currently is um, CC. Is there any desire to allow? Um, reutilization of that property? That's a pretty big parking lot. And I don't know if it's a separate parcel. I know we're not being parcel by parcel. Is there a way to overlay, um, as Jeff said, where you could potentially have two different uses? I'm thinking this and then also perhaps the area um, you know, with Safeway and. Yeah, that area. Is there any desire to have more flexibility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I think that's. There's a phone book. Um, there was a proposal to do that. Which. Bro, problem members, those were subject of. Um, incredibly misleading and made dive. Uh, completely, but it is, I, I know people talked about that, that is made. You know, good place for senior housing, maybe or mixed use. I mean, that's, there was a great deal of discussion. The Chaslin's Fault Area Plan about, you know, but that, that might be something you want to lose some flexibility for.
Yeah, so I think I saw thumbed up from enough of you to, to have, make flexibility in both.
I mean, I, a- at least for me, I would think something more akin to a flex office industrial than sort of a everything bagel.
Yeah.
Designation.
All right, any other specific proposals?
You say word about the NC at the very.
Yeah, so the, this is um. They, I think this is gonna be when they go over here. So we've got some. Um, not all of it, but some of it's vacant.
Right.
And so it's kind of an opportunity area mostly because it's vacant. So if we wanted to have more, but right now it's commercial.
Yeah.
So this would allow some more flexibility for.
Are you decided NC versus?
First what? Um, so that's a good question. I think that it. I think it could be a better candidate for MN just because of its adjacency to other single family. When we talked about those transitions.
I think also we were fo- focusing with Chasla as the commercial, right? And so NC is, is more commercial and uh, yeah.
Yeah. But, but that would suggest more density, more of the apartment level density there. If you wanted to focus more on town home type density. Then you might wanna do MN instead of NC. They both allow commercial. It's just the MS, the MN's more minor supported commercial.
It would probably flow better from the single family neighborhoods and all that open space by the police department. Having the medium density that would go in there. And I can see it being utilized in ways that take. Can use like the preschool and things like that, it would be.
Any other thoughts or comments? We'll wanna see if they wanted. So we've got a proposal to go to um. The MN category, so the mix, the um. Sorry, the mixed use residential versus the neighborhood center.
And partly I'm looking just for thought, because I'm looking at some of the density, like eighteen to thirty. Volumes break versus the B to eighteen as far as transitioning directly across the street where there are single family homes. Into like more of the dense and into the commercial spaces versus, you know. A three story apartment building goes right in next to it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's one of the open spaces that's on the market right now.
And the MN category doesn't prohibit three story apartments for, it's supposed to be more context sensitive, so. Is there more discussion or is we do a straw poll on that?
Oh.
We're interested, yeah.
The flex space um. By side, like it cuts to NC area, so I go. So, I mean, so why flex space? What's all the way up to Centennial? I only ask because. You know, really busy roads there. We've asked in other instances in the community, we're like, busy roads. Running between, you know, neighborhoods.
So.
Connected or now is it already built out or?
Can, say that again, can they be connected?
So like that NC.
In like right through here.
It's an island right now.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the reason we did this, and again, we could take council direction on this, but thi- this is all existing um, develop. It's existing office development. Some of it's barely recent. Um, there is some residential there. There's, there's one residential property in there. Um. And some other institutional use. Anyway, I think that when we did this designation, it was in recognition that we didn't expect a lot of change in the next ten years. Because of what's there.
Okay. So is your, or that it makes more sense to have that be flex space since we already have like something that's, you know, uh. But I don't know, hats like a school, right? So it's not housing, it's also not commercial. And it's actually at Century where that line comes across behind the Walgreens that we have the residential. That's the.
Oh.
Um, Centennial also had to clarify. So you knew what the residential was that brought this mentioning. Um, so that kind of like, it, it's so tucked in, it just like kind of flows and they have super easy access and sending Centennial or Century Street. So your point, I think, is if that becomes residential, it's this odd little spot of resident, how do people get in and out? Access onto the Chaslin is so close to the traffic light. Or getting onto Centennial Park, what you're thinking and.
What comes to mind? I feel like in general, people live to, people live to listen. Oh, they really enjoy that sense of community and connectivity. And when I'm looking at this, it's like an island surrounded by busy streets. And it could work. I'm not saying it would it, but it just may pause. Um, but I don't want to spend too much time on it. I just ask it, does anybody to connect it to other. You know, residential areas.
What is Centennial lost density? So we can compare that building. That might be a good comparison.
It's three story structured parking, but I don't know if you use per acres. We, we could look up the P and V in a few minutes here. If I tell you the number.
You get confused, but. Which, what is the island? Which piece of it?
So this island here. So this is what we were talking about.
One we were talking about.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna talk to do a little thumb boat thing. It just stuck out to me as this island. I don't wanna belabor the point here, but.
Such a tiny corner for some. And flex does, flex does allow sort of some presidential. That serves as one.
Yeah.
But.
I see, I'm sorry, I, you were talking, you, you were talking about taking the flex and then extending it up to where this can see is up here? Is that what you were suggesting? Instead of the ham and.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense. It would flow better having all of that be designated.
I, I think each, I think any of these categories are kind of consistent with. The overall vision of what we're, there're just, there's some differences, of course, but I think any of them could work with the overall concept of this level of land use plan.
Yeah, and it might be just. But does the neighborhood center, though? That almost allows and, and indicates too much density in housing in a very small little piece of land.
And a piece of land that's between two very busy, loud streets.
And it's all commercial all around it.
Right.
So might as well do flex and be more encouraging of that utilization. It would. There's gonna be asking everywhere that other, like, it's gonna give lots of opportunity to developers that are interested in seeing this, I think. Maybe it makes sense that that flows, but the continued. Lower school, commercial, restaurant usage.
And I think flex is a little too narrow. For that in terms of. Uses, I don't, not as. Yeah, it's a busy, it's a busy street. Um. But.
I think so. I think if flex allows, and the wording here makes it sound like it doesn't allow ton residential. But if we could have a, a flex category and maybe it's just one of the words just being changed. That, that allows, you know, since significant amount of residential. This to me seems like a great candidate to just have true flexibility on, right? It's, it's adjacent on two sides essentially to single family. It's adjacent to the south to a commercial. It's gonna be adjacent to the west to this flex space. And like, who, I mean. Who knows what the right does make? I don't know how we sitting here can say.
Yeah, so I, I would say the flex office industrial, as we've described it, is not what you all are looking at. What's the most flexible is the mixed use residential in the neighborhood center. I would say those are intended to be the most flexible. Districts. I think the, the primary difference is density. So if you want, if you're wanting to have a predominance of three story. Um, apartment type densities, then you wanna do neighborhood center. If you're more interested in. Town home, row home residential densities, if there's even residential there. Then you would wanna designate it as mixed use residential. Now neither of those categories prohibit. Anything else, but they're predominantly supposed to be pointing in that direction. So again, if you mix use residential, if you want row home, town home. Uh, neighborhood center, if you are more interested in three story apartments as a presumed potential use.
I, I don't know, strong feelings into trade, those I, I wouldn't pick one over the other.
I would, I would for mixed use then of the term. I don't think it's appropriate for something that does.
So if, if you're ready, we can even go through and see who would like, if somebody, if you're all interested more in mixed use residential or neighborhood center. For that one, just to try to, another way of doing a straw.
Yeah, it's. I was to refer neighborhood center. I, I, and do we have to leave it all that way too? Some of it may need more um, neighborhood center.
And so if we zone it consistent with neighborhood center, if somebody wants to come build eight dwelling units per acre, we're not saying can't, I.
You could build lower density.
You can build lower.
But I.
Just say a cap.
Yeah. Right, so think of it this way. If, if you pick this to be neighborhood center and a developer comes and looks at our map. And they're like, oh, I'm gonna buy this property and develop. They're gonna say, okay, what can I do there? If we pick mixed use residential, they're gonna say, no, we could, we could do town home densities. Versus apartment density. So that's gonna guide their decision on that, probably because it's the predominant use of the.
And I thought one of the things that we were really making a concerted effort to do was transitioning from. You know, residential neighborhoods, existing single family neighborhoods into the more dense. Putting that level of density directly across the street and catty corner to neighborhoods. And like on, across the street on two sides, I might add, from. Single family residential neighborhoods, that's not allowing for the transition that we've heard from residents that they would like. Or that we have consistently talked about doing throughout the, the rest of the community. So that's why I just don't think that. The level of density there, there are places throughout the Centennial Valley and other parts of the community where I think it would be. More appropriate uh. Than to have it there. That's why I'm saying like, I think the, either the mixed use or even the flex, because they can still. Add residential interior. You, you have to figure a portion of it already has a school, it has a preschool, then there's empty spaces. And then it's, has businesses around it. And it's gonna have residential around it as well. I just think that transitioning should be, we should be mindful of that.
You're sort of at the school, like a preschool.
Yeah, that's right on the corner, right there.
I know, I mean, I don't, I, I don't wanna make it out to be more than.
That's a preschool.
Okay. The, the part, the part that I think is probably a better candidate for neighborhood center. If I, if I had, look, it's usually the southern, that southern, because there's less. Um, I mean, there's sort of, it's a three part. If, if you look at the way that it's split on that.
The parcels that.
Yeah, that neighborhood center.
What do you mean, on the south edge by? Yeah. I agree.
That I think is probably a better candidate than all of it. Cause it's a little bit closer to the. You know, the, the higher density base, so. And that's.
So I, so, so what, so whatever we pick tonight, it's again, it's not set in stone. There's gonna be a. Few more review sessions where we can make future adjustments to this. Um, so I, I'm wondering if it would be okay to see. Kind of poll everyone what they think, they'd like to see for now, but could change later. So there's either the mixed, again, it's the MN, which is the mixed use resid- mixed use residential or the NC neighborhood center. Would we be okay to go around? And just have everybody say which one they prefer and see, we have that. So, so we're talking about, we're talking about this property here for now. We're still trying to figure out what we want this designated as.
I mean, I know more of the. Oh, my name is it? Oh, Barbara's I am. So I, I remember Judy's suggestion, mixed use residential.
So mixed use residential, so it'd be the brown color. And I'm sorry for the MN. But it's hard to follow, so that.
Some of us just see North Carolina.
Minnesota, North Carolina.
Yeah, no, but, but. I mean.
Go Minnesota.
They go. If you wanna input on those two.
So we're gonna change this to, is anybody opposed to us changing this to. To the MN symbol, which is mixed use residential. Anybody opposed to that for the next round of review?
Is any, yeah, down the bottom, is anybody opposed to, let's see. So is this really a question?
That was well clean.
What I was suggesting, when I went to the map, was to use that bottom third of the NC right on the level. What I was suggesting when I went to the map was to use that bottom third of the NC right in the middle. As NC, and then we can talk about the ones in between.
Up here?
Yeah, no, 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 down, most of them.
Sorry, yeah.
And then we can, and what do you wanna do with that? Uh. Leave it on the others. There's no change.
No.
No change from there, yeah.
Right.
I mean, we were.
Okay, so.
Is there a reason why, I know you get exhausted, but it's like, there's, there's. Flex to the west, and you got an NC in the middle and a flex to the east.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason why there's not as much residential on that whole west side?
So the reason we did it this way is because there are several vacant properties within this NC area. So it makes it more of an opportunity area. We kept these as flex because of the existing development center. On the west side as well. It's all occupied, existing development. Yeah, and so we, we were thinking there is some continuity. Yeah, there's continuity through here, and you've got Centennial Parkway is a pretty big road going through there. But as far as neighborhood continuity. You know, and there's a lot of vacant property and maybe neighborhood identity that you can create with all the big properties that run here.
So that does just make me remember to revisit where I started, which is the white purple flex. I would like to see be, be truly flexible. I think we originally talked about, well, that does allow residential, but then I just said, but the most, the most flexible category is actually. Uh, mixed use or neighborhood centers. And would those be better designated as that instead or that in addition to what it is? I, I would like to see. Those, at, at least have the possibility to be opened up if this whole areas can redevelop. I think parts of those could theoretically shift use from what they are now.
Um, yeah, so, so I think we could see if council wants to provide more flexibility for residential there. On those existing developed properties. Again, we are calling out some existing developed properties through here for residential. But if we wanted to add more flexibility in there, we could change those colors. I would say we, you know. There could be a desire also to maintain the office park. Mixed use part of this, and um. So I think it's a market question too, right?
But I, I don't wanna take away. Office park or anything that's there now. I would continue to include that. But just also include other things i- in the event that somebody finds it an attractive place to redevelop.
So, so we can change the category if, if there's a proposal.
I was just gonna say the existing office would confine it to neighborhood center. All offices would be allowed, so wouldn't create a conflict. Um, we could also have language around this, speaking to what you're talking about and target dissipation as well, saying you'd like the most flexibility in this area.
Yeah. First, changing all of that to this pink neighborhood center color.
So just options.
Like, I, one of the things that I liked was the language in here that was available for community facilities. Kind of what you were mentioning, and that seems to fall well under the, the flex industrial. To me.
So, yeah, right now, the neighborhood facility aren't listed under the flex office.
Right, it's just under neighborhood center.
Neighborhood center. So we can change that to neighborhood center.
Because I think, like the area that Diana was pointing out, um. It's all parking lot, that, like, that would be great opportunity for something like that to go into.
I'm glad, I maybe just adding the description.
To that, to the other category as well, so that it, so that it would fall under both categories, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I like the idea of making it all neighborhood centered. Except for the MN portion, I know, the Harper'sburg.
These, these. So keeping the NC.
Like, ex- expanding the NC. Um. To the areas that are flex right now, as well as the area that's CC right now.
So all, all of that would become neighborhood center, and then we'd have, we'd have to figure out what to do with.
Yeah.
Property up there on the hill, so that's the proposal.
So aren't there some, some economic advantages, though? And I think a lot of the restaurants, especially the places that serve lunch along the Caslin, would argue, they would. Go out of business if a lot of those businesses, and they had issues during COVID, but a lot of people weren't working in those offices. And so if we're interested in maintaining some of the economy, the economics of this area and our sales tax revenues, we should think about some of the things that generate that. And a lot of that is office space, office workers, you know, being there, eating, spending money. That's something for us to really consider. I mean, we're not saying that you can't do residential. What we're saying, though, is we like the idea of the stay. Flex, office space, and that can lead to a lot of the economics. Making all of that industrial or residential or encouraging more of being intense residential. I think will damage some of these, would be long-term economy of the Caslin area. Will be a concern for me.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Let me just be clear about my proposal, which isn't to encourage. Residential over something else. It's, it's to designate it broadly, and then let it be more of a, a market-driven development. Rather than sort of narrowing in on both the things going in place.
And I think flex does that. I think neighborhood center encourages the neighborhood versus flexible industrial uses that could accommodate for some residential. You say it's coming out. Keeping it the flex. I think it's correctly, doesn't.
Is any of that currently aligned industrial or is it false?
Um, some of its R and D. I, I, I don't know that there's any man. There might be, so, there is manufacturing out there now that I think about it. Yeah, so there's manufacturing and R and D out there. Out.
Being part of the difficulty is just. Within getting. But lost.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so I think we've, we've heard just from a couple of council members with, and so, but we haven't. Heard to see kind of which way council as a body is leaning, so I am curious to maybe try to make a decision on the flex. The other council members haven't spoke, they could give their opinion about. Changing that maybe to neighborhood center versus keeping it as flex. Maybe we can play around with the language to make it a little more flexible within that flex.
To clarify that, one part to.
Yep, so this flex, this flex right here, and this flex right here, we, we would either change, we could change those to. Neighborhood center. Or we can keep them as flex. Now, the thing about flex is it's not just here. That's the designation we have in CTC. That's the designation we have in First Red Tail Ridge, which maybe we don't want the exact same mix. So you're almost talking about creating a new category, which is fine too, we could do that. Um. But in any case. I think we just need to know if council wants us to keep this as flex office industrial or change it to neighborhood center this time. Again, not the last decision point on this, but it would allow us to kind of move on to the next, uh, next one as well.
And if we change it to neighborhood center. This is like what you mentioned in the downtown area, and if somebody goes through some sort of. Construction or rebuilding, like. Rebuilt. Thank you. Then they have to abide by. We.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's important to consider the whole thing. Any future development that requires like a PD, like a discretionary process, which we, where you're talking about, that's we found consistent with the conflict. The map is one piece of it, and the most tangible piece, but you will have all kinds of other supporting policies. To look at it all in balance. So if something doesn't precisely fit in this map. We would have a lot of other policies to point to that would, um. Probably support your topic about designing that. And let me just be clear about at least the nature of my proposal, which is. Not, not to do anything that would disturb the existing uses that are there. Certainly, when we want, when I wanna rezone to something that doesn't support their use, don't wanna encourage them to leave, don't, none, none of that. The existing uses that are there are something I need to find. I wanna add. This, you know, to, totally additional to what's there to, to encourage folks to think creatively about what. You know, what, what could be done, uh, without necessarily pushing in a particular direction.
I agree. I think that's why I like the, to stay flex, because the, the primary land uses. Is retail, white industrial and office versus neighborhood center, which says the primary land use is multifamily housing. So I think there is a clear distinction. It does allow for that flexibility, but it, but it is still saying that. The overriding preference, right, like, well, we're flexible with it. But we're, we're not saying this should be changed, where other areas were like, we really like to, we'd love to see those, we only do those, we'll come in. Versus this still seems very appropriate for business. For like industrial. I think that's the language change if you change it.
So can I offer services? I, I, I think. What I'm hearing it is, is it's like, keep flex office industrial plus, plus a little more, and I don't know if you need to sit here and decide what that's called. Right, like, it, it sounds like it's not called neighborhood center, but it might be called something else, and that's maybe where you're building that house.
Rob, would it be appropriate to change to add a, a land use category that's office industrial that would apply to the CTC area? And then just change the verbiage on this flex office industrial to allow more, so it doesn't say limited residential?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what we need to do, is have, we need to create a category, is what I'm hearing, so that this. These purple flex areas will, so when we come back to you, we'll create a new category that, uh, is primarily. Um, office industrial, but is, is, you know, more open to those residential uses than the other. Industrial designation. So we'll have to have office industrial residences.
And, and so make it clear on this, I mean, it's one of the things we. It's hard to imagine that this is talking about redevelopment back here, right? If there's stuff there, it doesn't move, it's not gonna change. If there are buildings, construction or whatever, that's when these categories will play. And it doesn't mean getting rid of commercial in this area, it's something that we hear. Uh, at times. It's very loosely, but every time we talk about residential, it's automatically considered a water.
Alright, so I, I feel like we have resolution on that.
So I, I have one more very funny question, which is the red CC area will be the new category you just created or something else?
No, the, the red CC is intended to be primarily commercial. Oh, you, you mean the mixed.
So what we talked about is either overlaying that to allow, um, more mixed use.
Yeah.
Um, the, the new category we're talking about is just straight office industrial that would be applied to the CTC area. So the CTC area would no longer be flex office industrial, it would just be straight office industrial. And then we would.
I, I thought, I thought you were talking about a new area, white, purple, a new designation, white, purple in this past.
Yeah, so what, what we're talking about is this area here. Okay, this area here, these two big purple areas, we're gonna create a new category.
Okay.
And then, yeah. And then I, you had a question about the CC area.
Yeah, so the CC, we talked about overlaying more of a mixed use rather than strictly commercial.
And that was limited to these areas over here. This, this corner and this corner down, it wouldn't be over the whole CC.
Yeah, and just the overlay, I guess my question is, are we aiming for one existing category, is what's it gonna be, this category creating?
I'm not quite sure yet.
No, no, okay, that's fine.
But I think, yeah, I think it might, might be a. It might, I was originally thinking it was gonna be a blend. We might do some striking or something that shows it would be one or the other depending on what. Comes in or what the market. If, if it's okay, let us.
That's fine, I'm, I'm agreeing.
Okay. So anything else on Centennial Valley? For now? For now, yes. Good, good clarifier. Okay, so. Red Tail Ridge, which again includes Red Tail Ridge, we've included the, um, kind of office commercial corner by the school. As well as the existing Vista Hospital Campus. Um, are all included in this area. They're covered by two different general development plans for zoning. And then existing land use, um, you know, Red Tail Ridge is all vacant right now. We've got some office, medical office, memory care, residential here. Of course, the hospital campus, the hospital campus does have three undeveloped big parcels. Um, so what we're proposing here. Um, is in anticipation of the hospital moving. I mean, they could choose to stay, keep all their medical uses. Um, but if they, you know, would the city want some flexibility for different uses other than medical uses considering the move? So that's why we did mixed neighborhood and commercial here. Uh, we do have neighborhood center here, which. We'll get more flexibility within that corner near the school. And then within Red Tail Ridge right now. Um, it's own office industrial. That's really. It's broad commercial uses, but it's, and it's anticipated as office industrial with a little bit of commercial. That's what's being reflected by this flex space. The idea is, do we wanna add some, um. Neighborhood center and regional center uses here. This regional center includes part of the hospital parcel. Um, as well as a parcel up here that's not owned by the hospital, and then all these are, um, red tail parcels owned by the developer. So the idea again is to get some residential uses potentially, um, you know, near the open space to support the school. Um, there is a transit station down here. Hopefully in the future, we'll have more transit in there as well. So this, and there's a lot of higher density development over here in Bootfield, so there could be some synergy. We are creating some good pedestrian crossings, um, and pedestrian connections through there as well to support this type of development.
I have one question in the, um, Mercy Corridor and the existing official area. Isn't there a house of residence?
Uh, it, it is owned by the hospital. It's, it's not.
The house is owned by the hospital?
Hmm, it's part of. Yeah, it's, it's in the GDP area. It's called for medical office.
So this is one where.
If we're gonna do the mixed, um, neighborhood designation for what is currently the Vista property. You know, um, they've been pretty vocal about their interest in maintaining it, um, for. Like, like outpatient services and offices and all that kind of stuff and, and not. Um, repurposing it in some way. My, my, my one concern with this limiting. Is that if they wanted to add or change development by putting in more, like, more, um. Office space for doctors or another mental health facility or something, that restricts that. I, in, instead of encouraging, if there could be like an overlay that says, no, 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 like, if, if you wanna continue to use this for additional medical use purposes. We're not restricting that, we're not discouraging it. Like, you know, where they had, like, there's a lot of that's a parking lot and, and other mental health facilities that are in there and things like, I would, I would. Wouldn't want to discourage them from continuing to maintain that. And, and it may, and add to that versus say, oh, if you're gonna change it, it's gotta be residential. You know, it's a little too limiting for us and for them.
Definitely work that in, in this council's direction, whether it's your sort of policies.
Yeah, I, I think the idea was again, having a, um, you know, if there was this, and again, I don't know what the hospital's really long-term plans are. I don't think we really know what the long-term plans are for the hospital. And the idea was that if there was, if this was a place where we wanted some residential, we probably wanna lower density transition. Coming from, I mean, the current zoning would allow up to three-story or even. Coming from, I mean, the current zoning would allow up to three story or even four story office, medical office in there. So this would um contemplate uh a transition of residential development on portions of it. Um, so. But we we don't, you're right, we don't wanna discourage the existing uses there as well.
And this might encourage, I I if if the hospital wanted to add. Residential for their own purposes, so that they had staff housing or something, this would kind of give them that flexibility that they they could make. Plans like that to bring to the city, is that also part of the thought process?
I mean, the the idea is that there could be housing out there, whether they did it or somebody else did it. It's it could be in support of the medical uses there. But I. I think also, just to back up a little too, like even if we change this to. Um, if we change anything to a new category, it doesn't presume that any of those land use, they're no longer desirable, it's just. If they were to, if if we were to tear down the hospital and it didn't exist, what would we want there? So that's another way to think of these land use category, what would be the the best desirable use and flex and you know, the mix of uses that you might have.
So what women missed? From adding the drinking.
So if they wanted to add, um, like if they wanted to add additional offices out of. Um, their current zoning allows the development of additional offices, so.
So this would not. Presume to change, um, I think we need clarification, I think it's a good comment.
Not explicitly say support or continuation of hospital, all ancillary hospital uses, but if it's a wholesale development, the hospital goes away, what is somebody else?
Yeah, that's a good comment that we need to add clarification of that, if this stays.
One of the things we're not talking a lot about right now, it's open space. Right, and there's some concern about. Open space of just south of the bar. Just just um.
Yeah, 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 so there is, um. So there is open space here, we we probably wanna fix this to show that they're, they actually, the hospital actually dedicated some open space up here. So I think we wanna bring that screen band to reflect that existing oval space, but. Um, you know, getting down to the OSAB map, um, you know, there, this is a. You know, number one high priority, this is one of the developed parcels for the hospitals, so. Uh, you know, we're cross referencing that and but with a land use map, you know. If this could be acquired for open space, that's what, that would be the priority. But if we're not able to acquire it for open space, there's the development, right, and if there, if it is gonna develop, so we kinda have to think about both. And so that's why we would, you know, show it as what our desired use is. To knowing that if the opportunity arose, that's the high priority acquisition potentially. There's a better view of the current land uses that shows the existing open space dedication that the hospital dedicated and then that gray vacant parcel there.
On the left, it's the very upper right corner, be vacant. Right there, yeah, and then it's changed to neighborhood, neighborhood center. So that would, that would be a neighborhood center right next to. That's not.
So Stan's already made that comment, I think that's the. I don't think that would be appropriate for neighborhood center on that parcel there, so I. But council may disagree, but I I think that's a better transition area. So I think that's already a stat comment on this.
Jumping into the the drawing, just like missing open space was one of those refining points that you guys all.
And there's actually next to the park. Um, to the west of the NC area, isn't there some public use there?
Right here. Um, there is a privately owned parcel there that was excluded from the last round of Redtail Development. And um, it's under private ownership and they would like to develop with. So part of the Redtail dedicated land for that. So, so maybe just to kind of focus on the hospital parcel. Um, I think we have some work to do on the designation to make sure it's very clear that these uses are allowed. But if the word to transition to different uses are interested in the um. The mixed use residential, and again, we chose that so that purposely is calling for a transition of densities away from the. And then I think we need to work with our consultants on if a pure commercial use. Could be supported here from a market standpoint, or if we want more flexibility, that was one of the thoughts that we had, it would be great to have more commercial, more sales tax base, but. Um, you know, the. So that that might be worth thinking about for for some changes. So we'll work on that, and then um, again. If you have more questions or comments, going to this part of Redtail Ridge. Transitioning some portions of it to allow residential. And we, again, we, the reason we, so just for some context. Um, you know, there is a great separated crossing between the Bluefield development here that we're contemplating. And so that's part of, and there's a lot of residential over there, so there might be some, it might make sense. Or there to be residential here also because of proximity to the open space and the schools.
I ask the, so the rough shape of the flex. Does that reflect like? UDs that, you know, are coming or?
So. The these shapes reflect the development parcels that were platted for Redtail Ridge. And so, um. I would say these shapes don't exactly follow those parcel boundaries though, when you start dividing the flex between the neighborhood center. That they're meant to be more non parcel specific, so this wouldn't reflect the actual person. This is like a proportional miss, does this look like a good performance?
Like the ends, the neighborhood center on the lower west side. Yeah, it's a longer sense. I feel like that would be kind of disconnected from the other portions where they're not residential. Um, and you know, so it's not. That close to the school, right, seeing other places. It's also not as opposed to the hospital, so. If we were gonna retain that, I would rather sort of shift it over and have. More residential or mixed use, closer to the school, closer to the hospital. Not have this kind of. Residential, partially residential, so. I also would want.
It's actually, just as an example, it's a super awesome little walk, easy walk, cuz all the kids and spirit are doing this already. Um, and we're bringing most of the way there, that is amazing housing for kids that are gonna go to the school, and they'll be going through a designated path through the open space. And the um underpass, so it's actually probably one of the nicest and safest ways to get to a school.
Any other, any other thoughts on the the mix of uses here, I think one of the things, you know, when we come back. Um, you know, I I know we we need to talk a little bit about. You know, the densities and how if they were to develop this residential, I think it's good to know what range of number of units we could have. And that might help refine this map some more, so we'll we'll be looking at that as well when we come back. Any other, any other thoughts on that?
I thought the transition would be from, you know, like where the school to the new open space. And where we have it now is the um, the neighborhood center in the northern section. Um, my worry would be that we're, we're gonna have this stark at the top of the hill. Big, like, building, like, housing that goes in versus like a transition that will make more sense. Coming off of that open space visually as well as usability wise. Like that's why I just want, and and I don't know how we make sure that that's kind of mindful, yeah.
Yeah, the neighborhood center would allow three stories. And suggest my like them, I'll be, along with the mixed commercial office.
It's another example of whether an area specific policy that, say, you know. Whatever words you use permeability, new protection, integration with the open space, things like that, um, you can add that up there.
I think that would be.
Section of the plan that says here are sort of the goals and policies for these optional areas, they get added in there.
I, um, you know, a lot of our areas of the city. Um, allow up to three story development already, a lot of folks have chosen not to do that, so. Um, it's not that they couldn't do that right now either, it's also, this is might be more of a mix of mix of mixes. Than heights and densities, that makes sense.
Maybe one follow up to the question, I mean, again, that lower portion of NC, and do we have a sense for like? Could it be, is it large enough to be sort of self sustaining that's center? If we put housing there, would there be enough? Activity to to warrant that, you know?
I think that parcel, you know, it has a lot of constraints, just in its size and location on a corner. Um, I think that the most likely use of that is an office use. Um, it's really not big enough for residential, I don't think. So, um. You know, again, we're we're kind of looking more broadly here, but I think that parcel itself would be unlikely that it's for residential. Unless it was like a very small senior memory care center.
About thirty acres, that EC area.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking about this little corner right here.
Sorry, no, the larger one. Yeah, the the one along thirty six.
The one, oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
Seriously.
There's, there's a big lag on my computer up here.
So that's adjacent, that way there we said, so it means you decide neighborhood center as opposed to regional center.
Um, so, so the main reason, if you're familiar, there's a berm up there that was originally built. Storage tech to kind of block some of the development that was there, so I think there's always been uh an idea that. There was some huge preservation intent and we had one really tall building there.
I have another, like, comment or concern, so this is, I think it's probably a good spot because it's showing especially residential. Um, although multifamily, which is built a little different and lower density. Um, but because it is against all of this new designated open space, and and one of the things that we're really being mindful to consider in the comprehensive plan. Is mitigation from like natural disasters, wildfire, conflagration, things like that, is to making sure. And I don't know if this is through comment, because the location is by open spaces that can present a danger, especially given that the area to the west. Is also open space and it's not managed by our team. That there is some level of consideration given to the mitigation or the resiliency of the neighborhoods. When developers are looking at doing that.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, you know, we're gonna have a wildland urban interface code through the state mandatory code, the state map actually covers this property. So, um, you know, because there's a lot of open space and open land there. Um, so I think through those codes, we would require those mitigations when they develop. So it'd be home gardening, defensible space, all of that.
So would it make sense, it's it's somewhere in this, maybe that there is maybe a note to that, that the wildland urban interface would be applying to these areas. Just so that there is a level of consideration, one, our residents understand that this is something we're being thoughtful about. But two, developers also understand it's a priority for them to understand.
Well, I would say we're gonna have a regulatory map, and we don't want this to be regulatory, so I don't wanna suggest that we're designating certain things. So we we should rely on the regulatory maps.
So just leave the conversation about the the mitigation.
They're very, that would very clearly link to that.
And Rob, that discussion is gonna be the next part of the discussion, right?
Alright, any other land use thoughts?
I have a question, how much control do we actually have over where they place things on the product? We can say you can limit in height or lot coverage, but can we really say this is the only place you can put housing?
Um, yeah, we typically do through the zoning, so we can say, you know, once we get to that regulatory stage, we'll pick the parcels and say. You know, this is your zoning, so that will dictate exactly what they can do on that parcel. And then we'll have things like setbacks and design standards that would further regulate where the structures could go on. So, um, any other thoughts on this, we did. So we'll have a little bit of refinement on this, but I think we'll come back for more discussions as we go. Okay, so South Boulder Road. So here's existing land use and the proposed land use map. So a couple of changes to maybe highlight is this long parcel down here on the back of the open space. Right now, um. The existing land use is low density residential, but it's actually zone commercial. Uh, so it's probably not the best commercial property. So it's part of the GDP area, but it's zone commercial other than a little, you know, the, there's two, there's two existing residences up here. Um, so I think through some of our analysis, we thought that could be a good area for residential. Um, rather than commercial. And then adding some more flexibility and uses up through here, so again, we kind of got that. Mixed use residential and that neighborhood center to provide flexibility, we certainly wanna maintain that strong commercial core there as well. This now, um, so we're showing that with more flexibility up through here for different types of housing. And and commercial, support commercial.
And all that gray.
Right here, no, this is all open space, this is all protected at open space. And there are some open space parcels here, we need to make sure get colored in openly on the future land use map that aren't requested. You can see them here.
I think you guys come up with that to be the mixed use residential mixing the hood on the far east skinny little piece, it's like that, looks far.
Right here. Uh, I think we were mostly thinking about maybe what would be a good housing density for there, so we're looking at the predominant, um. Mixed use residential density, and we're looking at what's adjacent to it on the Lafayette side. Um, and then, you know, the width of the lots, the constraints about physical. Shape of the lot, seemed like that would be the best.
I just didn't know if it would accommodate even higher density there. Helping to potentially encourage some more like affordable attainable priced homes and things like that, which is. You know, not necessarily capital A, but like. you know, we hear better density creates potential for greater affordability and has access to shopping easy. I didn't know, I, I mean, I don't know the sizing.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it's infeasible to put higher density there, but it's pretty, it's a pretty narrow swath.
Thanks.
I mean, I wouldn't be against investigating that more.
Okay.
Um, in that particular area with the caveat that there's something in the policy, you know, positions saved early as next to open space, right?
It's a medium.
Once the, um, public transit over there, we would sound older, with access.
So here it is, it's designated yellow on this map, which is medium gray.
It's before that, so it's on the right hand side, uh, if you're heading toward Lafayette. Before you get to the crosswalk, the pop lights, it's on the right hand side before you get to the little townhouse.
So it's basically right behind Seventh Generation. Is that correct? Seventh Generation Bar?
Yes, yes.
Okay, going towards Lafayette.
Yes.
Yeah, adjacent to Lafayette.
Right.
What were you suggesting? You said, meant to be saying.
Neighborhood center.
Oh, I like, uh, a higher density in that.
The next intensity up is the pink neighborhood center, which would, um, suggest three story apartment type densities. Versus, you know, two to three story townhome, broken density. Again, those are primary needs that allow more flexibility.
Kind of confidence in the middle. Of lower density and open space.
There's some fairly high density across the street. I think, but across the street, those Markells are three story condos.
Either three.
No, but.
So my question is, why only this question, South Boulder?
Um, you know, we, we, we could, we don't need to limit it to this. This is where we've just focused on. I know there's some existing office buildings further down South Boulder Road and, and other things.
Further west.
Further west, yeah.
It's just not in the, it wasn't contiguous, but there are.
Yeah.
You could zoom in on that if you want.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so we've designated, I think this is neighborhood center, it's a very good resolution. And then we've got some existing affordable housing that, that actually occurring affordable housing, but yeah, I think this, this would be a little different designation.
Right, okay. And what's funny is that for neighborhood center seems odd to me because it's, it is surrounded by so much single family homes that maybe that's, that transitional the, the more of mixed use would be appropriated in there. Going from all of those single family neighborhoods to mixed versus the neighborhood center where I do actually, but I, I agree with Council Parametin that the neighborhood center makes sense on that far east property that's off South Boulder.
The, the way we're describing mixed use residential here, again, the broad term is it's really focusing on the residential usage with limited neighborhood serving retail, which is really different than like DLO, which we call our mixed use overlay. So I know this terminology is really confusing, but, um.
So that would just be like medium density.
So, right, so when we get up to the neighborhood center, we are talking more about office type densities. DLO we have as neighborhood center because we want to support those offices and those institutional uses that are out there, and there are existing offices out there.
Yeah.
Um, so.
It says mixed use is usually too, too many.
Yeah, so, so it is, again, it does say free in the appropriate location, so that's where we want to, uh, figure that out when we got into the regulations and development review process.
I asked about the, the neighborhood center, which clean ban of, of, of tracks.
Yeah.
Like across from the middle school. So that, like, currently that is, there's some single family homes. There's preschool.
There's some office buildings.
Yeah.
There's some rental homes.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious why by NC as opposed to MN or what?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we have a, a strong opinion from a staff recommendation on that, but I think we want to hear from council, again, knowing the difference in
Yeah.
intended density.
I think it's mostly, it's single family houses, mostly that are repossessed and that offices and things like that along that stretch, maybe more than that, but I think like three, family, four. Next, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you read the description of neighborhood center, that's not what exists there now. So if you wanna, if you wanna have a land use overlay that represents what exists there now, we probably don't want neighborhood center.
I mean, it's just like both of the other existing load density residential, like still yellow. Um, that one's different. I've no girl, this is like very. Who tries to make it very distinct to.
And that's such a commercial.
Right, over on the other side of the tracks, yeah, yes. And this is part of the highway, when you get to the other side of the tracks, it's part of the highway forty two revitalization area and it's part of the mixed use overlay. So the east side of the tracks has a very different policy envision. This would be a chain, like this, I would say what's over here represents the existing policy envision largely. On the west side of the tracks, this is a change. So I think options are with the neighborhood center, we can consider transitioning it to the MN or the mixed use residential.
Great question. Yeah. I don't know, I mean, like, well, I mean, also the little elderly neighborhood, like, you know, we've talked about, well, talking about transitions between neighborhoods. Just south of that, there already are those townhomes. That's a tradition, tradition there is. I don't know, I'm still a little bit like, if we're trying to consistently have those sorts of transitions. Sure that it wouldn't necessarily, but right. Lots.
You want mixed use?
Yeah, maybe.
So there's no opportunity for this, is that your thought process or you just didn't want the density?
Well, I mean, like the but, I mean, under the mixed use, right, it's those community centers. I'm gonna tell, so, and then I think I captured some of the ones there.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think what's there now is actually a mix of mixed use residential and neighborhood center.
Yeah.
Is what exists there now. So that's, that's something that if you wanted us to reflect what is there now, we could go work on that without getting into too much detail or a few. It's almost good direction.
Yeah.
So, and it's
True.
You know, so close to the transition into South Boulder, it gives a lot of opportunities.
Time check. And see a pot. Usually at least they break. I would have done that. We're pretty close to being done with this.
Yeah.
I already did, yeah. Yeah, but I'm taking a break. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna take breaks soon.
You know, quite describing on this part.
Yeah.
And then remember, remember, you know, Josh's suggestion, what you just mentioned, Ralph, it sounds like the current designated encompasses some of the uses we currently found in the area. And the developer can almost decide to move down to a mixed use residential. Doesn't mean that we choose, but if we do that ourselves, if we take away what's probably there, the ability for it to remain.
So I, I don't think any of, anything we do here won't take away anybody's ability to remain. Uh, they'll always, they'll have a right to stay there as long as they
Right.
But, but if we, but if, if they want to make changes, then we would be saying, well, this is the direction we want.
Right, right.
So I find we can have that.
Leaving is, okay. So I'm, I'm hearing of some majority of leaving of the way it's spoken. Anything else?
Yeah, there's one of them, they, uh, village, um, shops. It's a cool, just where.
The Mud Rock Shopping Center.
Stop that.
Oh, thank you. So appreciated.
So that's gonna be over here in this area. So, yeah. It was the Mud Rock Shopping Center, so we've got, we've got Center Court Apartments here, we've got, uh, Shamrock right here. Yes. So that's all designated as neighborhoods.
I just wanted to, that would allow the there's often a lot of neighborhood center would allow that to develop. Well, parking.
Oh, my gosh, you don't even see how much of that apartment complex in the Center Court parks in the, the parking lot. It's a, because they charge them ten bucks a spot. And so a lot of people don't want to pay for their own parking, so they park for free.
All right, so, uh, no, there's no right to.
No, they, I'm, there's need for it, but I guess I'm pointing out.
Yeah. So there's a lot of flexibility, the way we've done this, again, for things to stay and things to develop, you know, based on market and mixed use. And, um, again, keeping the commercial core. Well, that, oh, go ahead.
All right, one other thing, so we've got a neighborhood center right next to Lou Dancy at the very top.
Right up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's been zoned, um, you know, to be a mixed use parcel primarily with commercial and up to three story residential. Anged over the years, so I think this would support generally what it's been envisioned for in the past. Which has been a tran, and there is transit, like when developments have come in, there have been talk about transition. Uh, every development that's been proposed there has some density transition away from the existing neighborhood and there is a park here as well as.
It's not the Cowboy Park on the top right.
It's just, does that show?
Yeah, Cowboy Park.
Yeah, on the top right.
Uh, no, 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 yes, Cowboy Park is here. Hard. Is it Cowboy Park?
It is, no, Cowboy Park is.
Oh, to the left, yeah, it's gonna be to the left of forty two, sorry.
Okay, yeah, so anyways, ready to park on it, there's a nice one. Bring it all.
Yeah. Other.
That NC, please, that you was pointing out, is that the one that Toll Brothers came to us with an idea? Okay, that is the one.
Yeah, yeah, that's where Toll Brothers.
Okay.
Sketch plan.
Why don't we take a break until eight fifteen?
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you. Alright. Next, so yeah, so the the next is to get into all of the policy statements, so. All the goals and strategies which um you know, there's some structure around in here, there is a hierarchy to. Um, you know, to to everything. Thought I had it up. So, yeah, there's a there's a hierarchy to everything, we have kind of goals and strategies. Under all of these topics. And um what I'm hoping we can do next, again, there's a lot in there. And we're again, staff is going in, we're trying to get rid of redundancies, provide clarity. Um, kind of fine tune those, but we do wanna hear from council. On each of the goals and strategies. Um, you know, especially if you think any of them are just wrong, you need to be deleted, if any of them need editing, or if we need to add. I think, and then we'll take another crack at it and come back with hopefully a better, more refined document. Um, so I think we can talk about this structure, but I'm hoping to leave that to the end and then go through the actual goals and strategies if we can. And just go topic by topic and see if council has. Um, again, deletions, edits, or additions to any of those. And then this is where we could hopefully be really efficient with some like straw pulling if council wants to take up any of these topics. So I'm gonna try to do.
On that slide.
Yep.
Under uh. The community services and infrastructure. Is there some place that we're staying mentioning safety? Like the police department or?
Yes.
Something.
I think it's in court, the services.
Oh.
Uh, these are just the categories, all the specific policy statements, just the the of infrastructure. But that would be one of them, those are core services.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I'm just gonna go the way they are in the plan and um. We basically have land use and development focus area, and then we have the three subcategories, neighborhood enhancement, housing mixification, development opportunity. Area goals, suppose. I think we just talked about those opportunity areas. Um, and then we have. Um, kind of the goal statement, and then we have all the strategies over here, so I'm just gonna open it up. And if we could tackle land use and development first, and if any council members wanna propose. Um deletions, edits. Um, or additional. Strategies.
Um, so just starting with the first one, the neighborhood enhancement goals. I I question. Whether this is, this is really something that needs strategy, that seems to be implicit in the document, that development. Can be consistent with a comprehensive plan, and we're introducing use code revisions. I I guess I I don't object to any of it, but I also. That isn't that what the comprehensive plan is, is it really a separate policy goal?
Um, yeah, I I I see what you're saying, and they a lot of it goes without saying. But I don't know if you've gotten into each of the the strategies as well, because some of this, so once we get into the development code rewrite. We're hoping that the strategy statements especially can kind of reinforce. The land development code rewrite exactly.
Well, let me make a at least a suggestion and whether. Other council members agree or not. If we, yeah, i- if we. Focus. A bit more on the right side. As we're going through, and maybe we're gonna get lost too much in the strategy case, but. It may help to put the, I mean, that that formulation there. It puts the meat on the bones, it is doesn't. It it. I'm not sure how you're suggesting, you suggesting just to go through the goals. Because I think it's. I don't know, I my my own impression was it's. Sometimes tough to really evaluate those. Goals without.
Well, but I I I think you can go either way, and I do think that, you know, there's a suggestion. I I do think it's gonna be helpful if this plan says, go update your developer. But I think we need to say it somewhere in here. And then they, you know, under like, under that NE. Sorry, I think I wanted. Oh, sorry about that, I need to go up. Let me just align these. So we are. And I I I know the numbering of these are out of order on each of the documents, that's what we have for fifth right now. So I think there's a suggestion that we get rid of the neighborhood enhancement goal altogether.
Or or true, I mean, I I get the sentiment, I really made this comment in our last meeting, I think they paid three subgoals under every goal. With the same pattern three, and I I mean, there's there's three subgoals, and then all these strategies that all essentially say. Similar things.
Yeah.
Right, development should be consistent with your conflict, and it should be appropriate, I don't think anybody thinks development should be inappropriate. You know, we. One goal was maintain and enhance areas with mature enhancement. We need that as a as a strategy. I don't. I to me, there's there's just this a lot of, you know, I don't know if it's AI or copy paste or how they made it. But it it uses a ton of words to say what our development should follow the conflict and be good.
Okay. So I think we could take that comment, and even as staff go back with consultants and try it, and with the lens of if we're gonna put the goal and strategy in here. It has to be worthwhile, it has to say something, it has to mean something, it has to actually provide a guiding policy, and I think we can go in. And do our best to do that, and next round of review, if we're not into the mark. We'll we'll just keep working on it, but we get it right, yeah. Um, but any of them that are seen as substantive. Do you want to delete them because you don't think they reflect community values, edit them to better reflect community values, or add a new one? So I'm I'm talking about the goals or the strategies, both, either one. Anybody, I just wanna go, hopefully you have, you know, some organization or notes yourself, so if any of you have notes on. The land use and development focus area. And and it doesn't have to be. Any of these three subcategories, just throw throw out your proposal, and then we could vet it.
So I I have another one for HD.
Okay.
I think there's the the rip comments too there in the. End of our packet, which is. I I would like to see the HD goals call out with more specificity. What it is we intend for existing residential zone of the areas. Obviously, we've done ADU. Um, and there go, there's a lot of, what I would go aspirational language and other parts of the plan. Around in bill and missing middle, like those kinds of concepts that are also in our housing plan. But I didn't see a strategy that sort of. Says in concrete terms for existing residential zone of the areas, or the residential place type, I guess, the the context of this plan. How, what's the strategy to get the missing middle forms, to get the gentle infill? Is it duplexes in some places? Obviously, we've already done ADU, but like, what's the infill strategy?
So I, I would say that. You know, based on what we heard from the community as a whole, that those areas, that there wasn't a lot of desire. For that change, and and when I say that, I don't mean like, everybody thought that, right? We're we're just trying to get what the predominance of the community was, so that's why I think we talked about the areas of stability. Um, but I think if council wants. More. If 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 council as a body wants a policy in those residential areas that could that would suggest. That there should be more gentle infill, then we could. Define that in the next draft.
Let me kind of embellish on that virtually as a second, or maybe make it. Different, different, I guess, sort of a different. We're facing some. Mandatory. Language in state statute about how. That, right, I mean, and see, well, you know, it's it's. We can, we can say we don't have a strategy, we leave it out, but it's, you know, there's. There are places in. The existing residential areas that would permit. Duplexes. Or it's important, right?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things there, one is that some of the state laws, to get the transit oriented. Development laws, like like that, like that, what's being suggested in that law within the established neighborhoods. Is is not gentle info.
Right.
So, um, you know, I I don't know that we're going in that direction. Um, that the community would support that, so, and then what was your second?
My. I don't wanna. It's really, one thing that's really important to get, and it doesn't need its own, it doesn't need its own strategy, but I mean, we can't. We don't know how the litigation is gonna play out on those provisions, but I mean. We're not assuming, no. Can't assume away state law.
Um, yeah, I I mean, that's it's it's complicated too, because the state law allows for various adjustments. To mean the law on three year rolling basis and um. You know, so a lot can be accomplished within the areas we've already talked about. And I I don't know where that's in my hand, if we can meet those obligations. So that's why we've kind of said, we need like, the timing's not gonna align with our comprehensive plan, at least a version of it. Maybe in a few years or ten years, you know, we 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 don't have to wait ten years to align that, right, so.
That that's a transit oriented.
That's the transit oriented developer, yeah. So I, so I think that um. You know, I I think we just need to hear, I mean, my recommendation is we don't try to. Get compliance with comprehensive plan with and oriented development build. Because of because of so, um, but I think we have a question too of if do we want. Do we wanna change some of the policies for those existing residential areas to promote, you know, what we're terming right now gentle fills? Fill, so we would change some of this language around if opportunities arise to add. Density. You know, going from a single family to having more town homes or duplexes, well, that's something we're interested. And I, and I don't wanna speak for you, but that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, no, that's. That's what I'm proposing, and it's, you know, if I could just read from the housing plan, this is the kind of thing I have in mind, which is. Evaluate excluding allowances for middle housing types into single family zone districts. Increase feasibility and foster more inclusive neighborhoods in appropriate locations. I think that's the sort of the general thrust of what I meant. I mean, we have this huge swath of the land map that's yellow. Some of that is single family zones on fifteen thousand square foot lots, some of it is single family zones on five thousand square foot lots. It, and. To to me, at least, it's not. It's. It's not truly a comprehensive plan, as we just said, all of that is is sort of frozen as it is, and we're not gonna. Just look at it and think about what it might be in the future, and write if you. This is what it used to, like, like one thing it used to, is you get two housing units on your big lot. Instead of one, I think there's other strategies like that in our housing plan. And without, I I don't wanna use this time to like say that the words should be on paper. But have some a strategy or a couple of strategies in the housing diversity, diversification goals. That sort of go in that direction, how you, how do you diversify? Big yellow area that Martin got.
I will say real quick, we didn't, we only focused on the opportunity area, that's to go back to the land map, but there are some. Medium density bubbles within the middle of the city on that land map, so for example. Um, I think there's an area adjacent to a couple of churches, um, that, you know, could actually redevelop. Um, there's a Montessori school that's now vacant, uh, a little kind of, that was a sunny mixed residential. That's not fully getting at what you're talking about, but we did look for those pockets, um, but I think we could. Add strength in language though, to say where appropriate to consider.
Yeah.
Initial housing types, mirror the housing plan.
I think that's right, and that, as you were saying before, like, the the strategies are an opportunity to embellish a little bit on the manuse map. And and so without sort of doing something global that says. You know, four examples, six places by right on that residential lot, which I don't think anybody here is suggesting. Uh, have some language that sort of aims in that. Gentle infill direction, but it's context sensitive, so on.
I think we can point to the, you know, the adjacent street type, you know, that type of thing, or, you know, if you don't wanna make it right in the middle of the neighborhood, or a quarter, or a business district, if you want that.
We can come back to it, but.
Yeah, I guess that's the question of. Do you want? Do you want suggestions for which ones?
So, so I'm try, I'm trying to open it up to the broader categories for efficiency, so what I'm asking for is any goal or strategy under land use and development focus area. So that's, that's one of our. Broad categories, but we've got a bunch of subcategories, so anybody that wants to propose a goal or strategy change. Under that category, doesn't have to go in order.
I really like us to reference the regional.
So do you want a strategy that says that we want, that just that we're aligned with that, or that? We as a city want to do something different from an action standpoint?
Uh, it might be okay to have a strategy that that says we're aligned with that. You know, I think ideally, we would have something that. Would have strategies that that are. That are working towards achieving that. In the spell.
Strikes me though. But your. Your first statement is really the goal. I mean, we're, we're not in any way. I am with it. Except perhaps as an old. It's us, well, it's getting, it's what, I think. Getting strasm in there or. Suggesting the strategy. It's probably. Just. I mean, I agree with you, but you should have some reference. Right.
So, so, so we, so I think we can add that, and then if. You know, the housing diversification goals are very, very close to our housing study goals, and if you actually go into our housing study, we have a, a matrix of strategies that are actual. Actionable items where city council can change policy and codes to support. Housing development, so I think we don't say twelve percent even in our housing strategic plan. But we, but I think everything supports movement towards that.
There's also, um, it fifty eight talks about naturally occurring affordable housing. That's already inherent, since the comprehensive plan seeks to support. Um, maintenance of these existing low units. So I think there, there kind of is specifically language to maintain events, very bottom of the A. Cause that is the, like, a lot of our.
Right, and when you get into the county strategy, it does, it does have goals for deep restricted affordable housing and natural occurring portal housing as well, so. We'll take another look at that, and we'll put language in there specifically about the county, um, strategies.
I don't know that. I mean, to 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 Adrian's point earlier, I. Think the. Strikes the most, most of those things. And he is. Bill or. I don't know, but it's terribly sensitive. We're trying to. Make changes to this and achieve that they're helpless. I think I. Next this. Strikes me this too. General.
Are you talking about the neighborhood enhancement goals?
I mean, m- most of those things I agree with, I'm not sure. Necessarily. Have anything.
All right, so, yeah, so I, I think we'll, like, I think we're gonna go back and rewrite that section, kind of with that guidance, and see if we could. You know, we're either gonna get rid of it, or we're gonna find what we think are more substance developments.
Yeah, I mean, I I remember tend to agree, I think, as Rob said earlier, well, I think it's worth. Specifically stating some of those things, but. Maybe we just kind of stated like the structure to. Plan for some of that, so. But, no, I mean, that sounds like a very reasonable. Perspective.
Okay. I don't wanna push anybody forward, but are we ready to go to transportation? Okay. So under transportation, we've got, um, transportation alternatives, multi modal connectivity, education. So if anybody has. Questions or changes they want to see in weeks. So again, knowing we're gonna restructure everything in general, yeah?
We just go back from, sure. So. I don't know exactly how this helped, that's in this. Related to H D three, I guess, but. I don't know, I've been thinking about ways in which. Ways in which we can really emphasize within the concrete, so plan that we want to see. A lot of the housing that is developed in the future to be affordable. And. I, I, yeah, I don't, and so in other words. More, more than we would get if people actually followed through with our. Uh, because housing work is actually. Say. So I, I don't know what the best way to do this is, I've been thinking about like, you know, could we have an overlay in the land use map or something that? That says like. In these places where we envision rezoning. Uh, what we actually want to rezone and then get a heck of a lot of four thousand there. So I don't feel like that gets through.
So I, so I, so I think. You know, one of the things when we did our housing strategy is we thought a lot, so here's the thing, if it's not. Economically feasible, it's not gonna happen either, and there, there is a limit of what you can do, so typically. Cities will go in, and if they want more affordable housing, that's deep restricted affordable housing. They're going to have to, um, incentivize, they're gonna have to have a funding source. Uh, or they're gonna have to give something like a density incentive, and I think there's a tolerance range of how much density incentive, so I don't think we can go in and say. All of our new housing development has, it has to be fifty, sixty, you know, pick a number, it's, it's gonna. Result in zero residential development because of feasibility. The economic.
I understand that, what I mean is like. My impression is that, like, if someone is gonna build a hundred percent for, right, then they can access. Money through state or federal.
Yeah.
Avenues, um. And that, that just allows them to do their development, right, so. And so. And and maybe that's the, maybe that's what we want to see in some of these places where we, we'd like people to try to do that kind of development there. Um, because cities really doesn't have the resources to provide incentives to go. And anywhere close to. A hundred or even like twenty percent or so. But I, you know, how do we reflect that in the plan, how do we, how do we say, well, yeah, we'd like you to build a hundred percent affordable area?
Yeah, I don't think, my response to that is that I think we're in the process of figuring out. Where those places. And I. I, uh, I guess I would be. I I'd be concerned about too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, yeah, that's my issue, that's like.
I mean. You could, I mean, you can do that, I just think that it's. It it could be able to say. When you're trying to do it in a comprehensive. So do you want this part of the city leading? It's become housing.
So I think one option that we could consider is this study that we are working with, um, Tressalon. That when they bring forward opportunities for how the city could encourage affordable housing. That we then take maybe some of those recommendations and incorporate it into. This, this section, and they've timing aligns itself to do so. Um, because I think that. Yeah, I think there's, I've heard consistent desire to promote affordable housing, we're not sure how to do that. And we're also a community in terms of the income level that we can't get a lot of support from, um. Federal or state, right? There's other agencies that are going to get a lot more support than we are. And so we, I think we have to look at non traditional ways to really promote affordable housing. Part of that is we don't know what those are until we, we can evaluate those opportunities. So for some of this, it might just be. Putting a pen in it for a little bit until we can get that information, and then figure out how to incorporate that into the discussion.
Yeah, and certainly.
Okay, so we'll, we'll think more about the affordable housing piece, see how we can bring Tressle back into it, develop the policies a little more, um, you know. So I. Next iteration, we can have more conversation, if that's okay about, um. Yeah, those two, that, so, uh, so transportation, uh, transportation mobility, bond to that, anybody has recommendations?
There's sort of, this is just a general one that. Maybe it's, it could. Lead into. The idea of. Words, I think, too much, but I mean, there's a, a variety of these things that need to be updated. Inserting rail. Um, and we just need to.
That is underway.
Yeah. There's a lot of this sort of. But, yeah, you know.
Is there any interest in, I'm not. Like, I'm. Smell like you know, I'm just throwing it out there, micro transit has become, you know, first to last mile, getting round towns. Has become increasingly popular, um. Lafayette offers a service like that, Erie is, um, few months away from implementing theirs. Is that something we wanna put in here to transportation alternatives goals as maybe micro transit, when you were updating?
It's in there.
Oh, it's just, oh, I'm sorry, carpooling, micro trans, it just, I, it was lumped in, but not. What I was appropriately looking, okay. Put it under carpooling. Okay. I would say it's more of an enhancement to public transportation. Versus the carpooling biking. Seems an awkward look, and maybe that's even why I missed it, I was looking for it. So if I'm not looking for it. I'm not gonna say it, I guess at my point, maybe it should be more prominently featured under, um, transportation infrastructure goals or something like that versus. I just thought, I mean, it's, yeah, not worse methane, not die on the fella, just it seems like a really popular. Added service when people are trying to use public transportation, and in our community too, where we've limited access points to it. It may be something that facilitates the. Greater use of.
Yeah, you, you know, a lot of communities are subsidizing it to bring it in, because it's, it's not, it's, you know, the market's not there. Um, so. We've been, you know, we're always presented opportunities, we're presented opportunities to do that now, any solutions. Um, you know, it's new services, new costs for the city, so that's. One of the, you know, one of the things we're considering too, is we don't wanna suggest we're gonna do something, we don't have staff or the money to do either, but. We, we, so that's where we put language in here, like, we're gonna explore something, and then when the opportunity arises, that's why we use some of that language instead of, we will do micro. We don't know if we're gonna be able to do it, yeah.
It says, maybe brought in one of the gold, well, we'll see if we can just. Are you talking about all of? Transportation, or we just.
I'm, I thought, I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I was thinking, if we just opened it broadly to the category, any council member that has a proposal can bring it up, it doesn't have to be in order. Anything, so.
This, this is, uh, this is one on M C one. Go down, so.
You want the strategy, did you get the strategy?
Yeah.
On M C one, yeah?
Yeah, well, it's actually. Yeah. And this is, um, this is both a, uh. Wordsmithing and substantive, but I think it's, it's not just increasing connectivity comfort. As well.
What are bike facilities?
Like bike lanes, bike trails. Parking, parking.
Huh, a bike lane is called a facility, that's interesting.
I, I would say about transportation in general, and I'm sure it's the focus of some of the South comments. Lot of repetition. Lot of, lot of. People should be able to get from where they're going to, to, from where they are, where they're going, said. Various different ways.
You totally agree, I think I'm looking for, there's a lot of coal in there, I think to be fair, but I'm definitely.
And like transportation alternative, multi modal, maybe you could all, I mean, there's a lot of collapsing, I think that could happen here.
Yeah.
I really agree on safety, because there, there's some bases where you do safety, and then some bases they talk about comfort. And. It's getting sensitive, but comfort to me, that's like, that's. Hit by a car, they, they want to be comfortable.
Yeah. So, so, so what, what it means in transportation bingo is that people feel comfortable going out. And using the facility, they feel safe, it's another way of saying they feel safe, they feel comfortable, they don't feel threatened.
Yeah.
So there is overlap in meaning, but it's not written well and clear and with, and it's not consistent, so we get it, yeah.
One other, this is a general.
Yeah.
Very general comment is, there are a lot of things. In this that are much more. They're just so general. I don't wanna say meaningless, but merely to give you an example on. Kind of T I to evaluate the city's funding structure, to ensure the long-term financial sustainability. Of like, every single thing. Including, you know, figuring out what the financial that is of some of the housing.
I mean, yeah, there's a balance between this being a strategic plan versus comprehensive plan, but I, I do know that it needs to be more specific. There needs to be less squat, needs to be more meaningful. So we'll, we'll do our best.
I, I just, what I think of is, is that. Folks seize on language in a comprehensive plan as ways of either promoting or seeking different proposals. And that's fine. That's part of the way it's supposed to be used, but. Yeah, when they're so general, it, it tends to be. To me, not really a strategy and it's.
I had, it's a frivolous question. It says crosswalk beautification initiatives, examples of what we've done. I'm just curious if you can tell me where I can find one of those.
The crosswalk beautification?
Since we've already accomplished that as part of our streetscape, I just was curious to know where to go look and see that.
Right, so I, um. I think that, you know, the city has put in a lot of, if we'll, I'm gonna use another, we go, we term enhanced crosswalks. Where they've put in, you know, things like stamped concrete. Um, and, you know, things like that to make the crosswalks more, like, first you make them functional with hard barriers. And then there's some level, and I know there was a lot of debate about. How much money are we gonna spend on beautification? Like beautification is a weird word for a crosswalk, but I think there was. Um, you know, some effort to say, hey, we're not gonna just. Put ugly concrete, or at least gonna do stamped concrete. There was a big debate about putting landscaping in. What that would cost, how much that would be to maintain the landscape, yeah.
So they're mostly like in, in like, like on median front, some of those crossing areas?
Well, they're actually scattered all over town where we actually did the bump outs to slow crossings, especially around school zones. And then we did stamped concrete bump outs. We started out with the temporary.
Um, yeah, okay, that's what we consider beautification.
Yeah, we, we can change that to. Stamp concrete.
I'm just thinking, it's gonna be really hard to like find those, and then it is in the eye of the beholder, but.
I mean, I assume you've caught some of those, there's some other sort of stray, like our pilot bike share program.
That's the hard part about reading the rough draft.
Yeah, I wanna be really clear, this was not intended for county or public consumption. I would be like. It's, it's painful for us. To be honest, but we're, we're working with you. We wanna make sure you're comfortable and we're going in the right direction. That's why we're trying to keep it on a directional level.
Think we've been to choose some of the ingredients for the sausage.
You know, it's, a lot of plans are like this, where you, you get these interim drafts and they, they need a lot of work. Yeah, before they're ready to go.
I just hope you're wrestling it, so.
I just wanna, so Adam messaged. In terms of example, downtown planter expansion enhancement program also is to make crosswalk areas beautified as well. The downtown planter expansion enhancement program. Was to make crosswalk areas beautified as well. So we've tied landscaping improvements to the concrete and pavement work. So thank you, Adam.
One general comment. Under the transportation infrastructure goals, I was really struck that. Goals have to start game and road maintenance, that was it. Um, and I feel like there's a lot, a lot of stuff having to do with transportation structure. And then a very small little thing, um. Forget, it's somewhere, one of the strategies, there's something about shelters, um. Maybe robust stops or professionals. Um, people will talk about, like, those have, either solvents.
So, uh, in seriousness. Like, this is very, it is serious. Um, you, to, just to function the lights on the stops or what would. Like, wha- what would be the purpose of the solar on the bus stop? And we don't have covered bus stops now, just so you all know, if we have bus stops, we have to pay for them and maintain them, R T V does. So, so would it just be to have um solar lights within the bus stops or for some other?
Yeah. I mean, there are places that put little gardens on top of.
We have heard feedback though, that people don't, um, because we don't have covered bus stops. You know, they don't like using the bus because in the inclement weather, they have to stand out in the rain, wait, and so. Yeah, there might be a situation where you have more of an enclosed type bus stop.
This may be more too general, but I mean, we are contemplating some transportation. Adjacent, or excuse me, some residential adjacent transportation. Emphasis and. Having infrastructure that supports that is a good thing, I think. You've got, for example, uh, a higher density housing that's close to. It would be nice to. It would be nice to do whatever is appropriate to, to try to, you, incentivize people to use it. Um, and to incentivize people to use the.
The buses specifically?
Well, I, I think it's take, yeah, probably, but maybe, you know, maybe rail. As well.
You're like, an example is some communities have explored, um, funding community no passes. Right, like that's one way, so lower barrier.
It's just a more, it's just a general category. And I've noticed that we did have something in there, but I go past it, so it's just sort of. That may be more specific than we need to be. I'm just thinking sort of a category that. Other. Suggestions in the transportation.
I generally feel like our transportation master plan is quite good. So, just, I'm sure, I would just say like, ensure that. What's here is really well informed by.
Yeah, that's actually, uh, one global comment I had while reading the draft is. It's not necessary to be helpful when you're reading it to understand which of the strategies come out of other plan documents, like where do they borrow from the housing plan? Transportation plan, and where is it a new strategy to this plan? And now, that might be a little inside baseball for your average reader, but like. I think a lot of these are, are heavily informed by the document.
Yeah, and you know, the example I keep thinking of too is that this is, this is gonna live for ten years. And there's a chance we'll update our transportation master plan in those ten years too. So, you know, the cycle of the plans and the hierarchy is that this is intended to be a higher level. And then the transportation master plan is supposed to have all of those things. One, cause you don't need the repetitiveness and a few years from now when we do the T N P. You know, there may be some differences, then we have documents that are different, if we try to always align everything, so we're doing them on different cycles. So I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, especially for things that we feel are really universal and not gonna change. But I can't come up with smooth examples, there might be a few that might. When we get to the next stage of our T N P, we might decide, we don't want eight underpasses, we only want four, and we want more here instead of here. So, we don't want that specificity in this plan necessarily.
Yeah, I think that's, I think if, if you do go and do identify that detail that somehow made it here, I'd get rid of it. And anyone who's talking about consistency in the T O Ps.
That's the struggle with these plans, you see, with the underpass, right? Like, we want a policy, because we value underpasses and we want more underpasses. But if we put a map in here that shows the specific location of underpasses, which we have. You know, that could limit, somebody could start arguing if we, if we decided as a community that we wanna add a different one in a different priority location. So, you know, these comprehensive plans are purposely meant to be very high level and a little bit vague, as frustrating as that. Can fill sometimes with the language, but. Not to say that there isn't fluff that needs to be taken out.
So a lot is to, like, kind of just pass along that, like, we're open to the opportunities versus. This is the only opportunity you get to have. It's like, come to us all. Everyone, like, a lot of different things happen, right? Kind of like the housing options. We'll put bigger, bigger less.
Yeah, so, transportation. Okay, move to the next item. Okay, sustainability, recreation, open space. As a focus area.
So, a couple of requests that came from, um, members of the community and just as a. Statement, guys are well aware, and we have a lot of advisory boards that help us make some decisions. We do not have an advisory board, we have members on an advisory board. For resilience and after disaster, that kind of stuff. So, rely a lot on being pretty heavily involved in that part of our community. So, and I think you saw the name of these from Aunt Brennan that came in, and there's been recommendations from others as well, and. One of them in this, just this big grouping. If, it seemed more appropriate to have, um, maybe instead of responding to an after disasters, it was more like preparing for. Um, and that it should be along with sustainability and climate action plans versus in there with, um, economic and social change. And that number two should actually then be the number one priority, not the number two. So it's a little bit more in line with what we usually hear from our community members.
I think one question that I have is just listening to, um. The feedback received from the public is should sustainability, resilience and adaptation goals be. Um, first of all, should sustainability, recreation, open space be a focus area? Or does there need to be some separation of these? Because sustainability is its own conversation. Recreation and open space could be its own conversation, and then to your point about the emergency preparedness, resiliency. Adaptation, you know, that could be its own focus area as well. So does council agree with keeping this as one umbrella? Or would you prefer to see this separated out into kind of three distinct areas?
So, I'll just say, I, there's a lot of sort of. It's a little mushy the way it's written, and like a lot of overlap in places that shouldn't have overlap and. Um, like the, the item you're hovering over right now was bewildering to me. Um. And this whole section, I don't know if it needs to be organized or different topics. Um, but there was a lot of, I think, mixing up between parks and open space or. Uh, mitigation versus response, or like concepts that I think in this community are important and have distinct meanings. And nobody's fault that those weren't perfectly captured, but trying to tease out some of those. Concepts in ways that make sense in the way that we talk about them. And I don't have a, a great plan to do that.
So I'm, I'm hearing from multiple folks that especially sustainability, um, resilience. Planning and response, um. It's, you know, so, and parks and open space, they really don't belong in the same category. They need to pull them out and have deeper dives into each of those categories. So, I think that's some good, good feedback and we'll work on that.
There probably is some overlap with, like, resilience, mitigation and sustainability with open spaces.
Sure.
I think that's where you find some of the overlap. There's less overlap in open space in those topics.
Completely makes sense.
I'll say that I'm confused by the, um. The definition of resiliency, and I've, I've said this to some of you before, when we had the meet and greet for the city manager candidates. I had people coming up talking to me about resiliency with completely different, um, contexts associated with it. And, um, and I, I did receive an email specific to this topic about, they wish we would define what we mean by resiliency. And that we stuck to the definitions of, um, how we define that, because, you know. It could mean different things depending upon who you're talking to.
Yes, a disaster resilience is a. Global warming resilience, I mean, what is it?
So what are the categories we're gonna separate it into?
So I, I, I think what I'm hearing is resilience and recovery. However, redefine it, need to be separate and, um, sustainability. Is gonna be its own discussion and there might be some overlap. And if, you know, like, for example, resiliency might include how we manage open space for the sake of resiliency, which is very different than the open space. Goals and policies themselves, which maybe talks about how we maintain and acquire open space and all the, all that, so. Those are the categories I have. Are there others you're thinking about?
I think in Anne's email, cause I think re- recovery, I think we're getting past the recovery phase. And so I thought that they were wanting a different.
Yeah.
Goal, preparation, preparedness, and.
There was, there was the adaptability, resiliency, and I thought there was one other word, uh, sustain. She has sustainability, resilience and adaptation, but that's different. Okay, so we need to, we'll have to come up with what that is.
Yeah, we can play around with that. Um, again, we, like, we might need some work on trying to define it and then running that by everybody and making sure. That we're comfortable with that, um. And, and, and I think when we're talking about recovery, it's more, you know, not recovery for Marshall fire, but we need to have. Maybe policies and plans in place about recovery for anything, and that's what we're talking about. Like, I don't know that we need to. Directly address, I don't think we need to directly address.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so basically. We're gonna keep open space and rec absence as separate, and we're gonna be splitting the top one, pulling off. Sustainability from whatever we decide the label's gonna be for. The other concept.
Yes, sustainability is gonna be its own topic. And then, um, resiliency, however we end up defining it, which could include all of these things. We are talking about environmentals.
Do you want open space and rec to be separate?
It probably call out parks, right?
Parks and recreation, and then conservation and open space, which we already have. We're gonna split the first one, a couple of categories.
Resilience and adaptation, you get some kind of. Safety. And that's just one part, maintain a safe community.
Could be.
I think we talked about the purpose of it when we did the introduction.
Yeah.
And maybe we could describe it in that way, like, it's all.
So I have a related comment, which is, there's a section of our code that says. Cop land has to have a map of that coal line hazard areas. I don't think we yet have them trapped.
We have a map of the coal mine, how there is. Hasn't been in any of the past ones, but that's a good catch. That's in our municipal code?
Sure is.
Okay.
We're already in violation of the book, correct?
That, those are fascinating maps, if you haven't seen them.
It's a great map.
Yeah, so the, the, there's one which has like the, the catacombs of undermining. There's like a general one that just has the depths, and there's one that actually shows all of the different catacombs under the city, which is like. Basically half of Warren City.
My house was on top of, like, an actual one, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Getting like scared and.
Check that out publicly.
Okay.
Maybe we should consider it. Or needs to change the.
Yeah.
Do not require it.
Um, so I, so we've got a lot of work to do on that one. Oh, do you have more?
Uh, just. Any one or two specific things. So, under the sustainability, I would really like us to call out. The resolution that was passed last year with our climate emissions goals, reduction goals. And I don't know to what extent we'll retain SRA two. Um, but I, I would much prefer that's something about implementation rather than development. SRA two says for the development of future plans. My perspective, we don't need to do much for planning most of that. I would prefer that implementation is really.
And. Yeah, I, I think it's good to have that we periodically update those.
Sure.
So, and just having those statements as well.
Should we be consistent if we're referencing housing and if we're referencing transportation, should we be referencing the sustainability since they're all separate goal layout plans?
Yeah, I think we can reference them. And again, I think in the next 10 years, the likelihood of us updating those plans are pretty high. Because we do need to update those from time to time. So referencing them is one thing, but saying they're integral or a part of this plan, we may want to stay away from for those teams.
That was the only reason I wasn't sure if we wanted to, like, take snippets from them versus just. If you would like more information, refer to that document, and then if that is a fall document versus something that's going to be stayed for 10, 20 years.
One thing I don't recall is seeing anything related to expansion of cellular service in Louisville, and I know that that's been a topic. From several council members recently.
Yeah.
That should be under safety.
For sure.
Yeah. Other than I want everybody, because I want everybody to recognize, we do not provide that certain, I know we have very little control. But I think having some policies about how we do, like, we, we do have a code. About it. We definitely don't want, like, I know, like, we control our code and removing barriers in our code. Um, but there are things we can do to reach out, right, to sell companies and beg them to come.
We've got to beg.
Yeah.
I'd love to know why. I, I can't wait to find out what the hesitation is. Do you just not get enough people signing up? I mean. I'm curious. I'd be curious to find out what our answer is.
Let's talk offline. I've spent a lot, I've, I've spent time in previous lives trying to. Troubleshoot this for low density suburban communities, and that tends to be the issue is we're a low density suburban community, and it's a money thing. Like, how much investment are they going to make for what they give that?
So they might like our new company and be like, right, come into town.
But maybe there's more to that. But I mean, I've seen communities like hire consultants to map their towns and where they have dead spots. And then send those maps to the carriers and say, look at all these dead spots. There's safety issues and it, it doesn't often. What I've seen is it hasn't moved the needle, but it doesn't mean we should find a better way. There might, we should keep working. More on that, on sustainability?
Um. Just, uh, I think one comment on whatever comes with the open space section. It's just to. Our, our charter does have very specific language. That's a sort of a special thing about our charter. So I just want to see that factor when you reflect it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're already working. Okay, um, economic vitality.
So we're not going to talk anything about the open space? Were we a hundred percent done with that? I'm so sorry.
Oh, you have open space comments.
I just, I wanted to make sure, like, again, where there's sustainability and, like, mitigation, like, uh. Disaster preparedness type of mitigation measures that overlap. I would like to make sure that within the open space, we are. Talking about some of that, you know, with, um, there was, I'm sorry, I've lost my detail line item now. Uh, it was mentioning, um, adapting to like native plants and things like that. And a, a part of what comes from that is also a preparedness factor against wildfire by recovering that and using, you know, our. Um, goats and cows to help us get there, that type of thing. I just want to make sure that there is something in here, though, that talks managing the open spaces. To preventing wildfires as well, because it keeps the whole community safe. Um, but it also keeps the open space a lot safer. We can do those mitigation measures. Make sure we just put them here on top. That was it.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask somebody if they disagree, that's not. I'm only, I'm joking. It's getting, if, if anybody wants to.
That, uh, I didn't hear of their H already for conservation of open space.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It might be a little already.
Yeah.
That's, I was like, I thought they're might. Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes. Use native plant materials, the mature, right, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure there was defined language.
Right, but how, but yeah, just as, we can't define exactly how we do that. That's a much deeper, like, in the comp ban. And we, we have a plan that maybe needs to be refined for managing open space. Um, economic vitality?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, one is in the sort of preamble to this, the lead up to this. They sort of set it up as, you know, so in, in city businesses capture forty percent of sales tax revenue, which is sixty percent leaves the city, which is. Technically correct, um, but actually a lot of that sixty percent is online. And it doesn't, it doesn't talk about that. And then that setup sort of leads into, well, we need to focus on these areas because that's where all the sales tax base is. And I, I would like to see that just portrayed a little bit more accurately, I think. Probably going to continue to see people shop online and the notion that we're going to, like, claw back a big chunk of that sixty percent. I'd be happy to get anything on it, but like, it doesn't seem totally accurate. Um. And then the other thing on this one is there were a few things in the next section about. My development review and street lighting process along the lines of what you guys have been doing for us already. Um, I would love to see like a cross reference in this section that sort of. Permanent reform development review, street lighting is one of our supportive business environment strategies. And I think it can be as simple as like, see the next section or whatever, we won't restate it.
Uh, I mean, I'm a proud strategy, not before me.
Anyway, I was just thinking, and I thought that was in there, but we'll make sure, we'll make sure it's, yeah, yeah.
Well, it seems like the goal that's been part of the core services actually means to move to this section. If I, like, the goal CS three, improve the development approval process by simplifying zoning regulations and creating more efficient, transparent, and user-friendly system. It seems that that goal should fall under economic vitality versus core services. Yeah.
I can, I can see how it's a course service too, but it makes a little more sense to.
This is, I'm, I'm asking to just boil it itself. This is, we're nothing, but it's also a policy, which is. Attraction. At least if nothing, that's part of it.
I felt like in one, I'm sure it doesn't really say anything about retention.
Intention.
I couldn't. I also feel like in the description, you call out passive stuff or. I don't know. I'd prefer not to, not to exclude places. Um, so, so just don't bother calling them out or. Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, like, in, in the more detailed strategies, perhaps, like, I think it's fine to have things that. Say, in this particular business district, want to do this. But if something applies.
Right, yeah, and, and this, yeah, this isn't the goal, it's like a description. Yeah, there's lots of flexibility in that, yeah.
Um. You know, one that we. Kind of harkens back to a discussion we had earlier about the land use map. I think how, how. We can land, obviously, in the sense, economic vitality. They, I don't know that there's anything in here specifically about. Balancing things like housing. Um, and changes in housing. And zoning. And that to foster economic vitality. I think we, we've got as a result of some suggestions we've made tonight. Some conflict potentially. Between how much housing we have and our economic vitality is, are suggesting. That we take some. Some areas that otherwise might be, um, you know. Commercial. Um, less fuel areas and potentially current housing, which could. Adversely affect our economic vitality. It's just potential that's there, right?
Yeah, and I, I think, I think we're trying to describe economic vitality in a different way. So that it's not exclusive of residential, because I think that's how we described it in the past, and it's one way of looking at it, and that's more, uh, you know. I think recognizing that there are mixes of land uses. That can add to economic vitality that include housing because they make it a more interesting or, or vital or vibrant place that attracts people and want to be there. And that doesn't get accounted for if you just go into the, the traditional zoning of commercial, residential, commercial.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, I. I'm not sure I have specific language about that.
But the reality is, is you can't make your whole city residential. It's not fiscally responsible, right? But you're also, you're also not going to get commercial if you don't support. And so it's, it's this, and there's no exact formula that's going to get from there. So it's a mix of character and balancing, making places attractive and having enough rooftops, like, all these things feed in to bringing businesses in. It's not, there's not one magic way to do it.
And, and maybe part of what I'm getting at is, we've got the, we've got the map. We, we did these in different parts. But in, in looking at the map and how you interpret the map going forward. It's useful to have some language in here. To, you know, reflect that those are really important ways of integrating the map. And different, um. There is flexibility in those. In the categories. You, I don't exactly know how to do that, but I, I think that's going to be in one criticism probably.
And you think, if you look back at the housing portion, so there's, I mean, there's stuff in there, make sure you have enough water. All the people and make sure you have, the, the, the thing you pointed out earlier, make sure you have enough money to do things that you're doing. Um, like, there is, there is some boilerplate in there about, you know, they, about balancing things and having.
The, the.
I, I'm just, I'm just for what it's worth, I think it's in there. I, I don't know that I would call it, you have to call it up again here. I, I do have. If you're done, I have one specific comment, letter capital G at the bottom left there. Um, this is really specific, but the, the notion of, um. Orienting the pedestrian experience towards South Boulder Road strikes me as incorrect.
Sorry, oh, G, or I'm going.
Like, if you've ever been an pedestrian on South Boulder Road, it's a, it's a work experience, and you want to be as far away from South Boulder Road as humanly possible. It's like, like, that's, it's a bad sign. I mean, it's just unpleasant.
Yeah, maybe. That was, that's, I would say that was a trendy thing with.
Yeah.
Planning on these, you know, high arterial roads. Um, I think there's. So, point taken, I think we'll try to describe that differently.
In terms, in terms of the asking comfort, I would.
I also, so, um, on the right hand side, under D, where I think this goes back, um, to Josh's point, where it says attract more. So I think it should be like attracted to retain local retailers, restaurants. But are we sure we want to say critical mass of business downtown, but we want that throughout our community, not just in the downtown? And to that same point, on the left, under C, it says explore, uh, market-supported development and redevelopment, assuming it wouldn't be market-supported. Um, and it's his, up like along the McCaslin Boulevard corridor as the city's primary shopping destination. We have a couple of primary shopping destinations. So again, I kind of, I, I think I would just delete, see if it were up to me, I don't think it needs to be there.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he is necessarily.
Yeah, it's going to happen.
On that, in the left side, under, uh, PP one. Uh, implementing. Compelling mainstream enhancements to create a vibrant, engaging downtown. What about engaging with that? Enhance it. In Caslin, um. The businesses on Caslin are very interested in getting some kind of city support, enhancing their.
And I think a lot of the residents for years have talked about seeing in favor of that. You know, having it be a lot more pedestrian, like all walking.
Right.
Usable.
And where is that excluded? Maybe you're missing.
It's just not there.
Yeah.
It's just downtown, quite a number of references. Yeah, I don't know if they need to be there.
Where was the, which one was the downtown? Um, like, it's enhanced, my PP one.
Okay, so, um. So I, I think there's this tension too about specific specificity versus. Getting broad, like, we could go in and we could have strategies about, like, anywhere there's business districts, the city needs to support those districts with good pedestrian infrastructure. And we can just say that. And then I just want to make, because there could be criticism too. It's like, well, we want to be like specific projects and things too. So there's. There's this back and forth about that, and if we want to lean more towards. Like a, a, a broad strategy statement that applies across the city, and that's the lens we want to use. There's, I don't think there's anything wrong with. So at the end of the day, how is this going to change how the city operates over the next 10 years is the question. So. Um, you know, what, what can we implement? What can we turn into a policy action? What can we turn into a project? So, you know, simply stating, well, of course, like, why wouldn't we want to make nice infrastructure for all businesses too? So, um, I know it's getting really late, but I, I think. I'm hearing what you're saying, and I think we can, and there's a lot of polling that we can do. But I would maybe recommend that we still have some specific callouts for areas because they have their own unique needs, but we have to articulate it better. I think is what, is what it is. And I don't know that we'll get it exact next time, but I'm hoping we can get it better.
One thing I guess I'd like to blow up and see what people think about this is. Some reference, and it might actually be a separate goal, and it is very place-specific. Some reference, and it might actually be a separate goal, and it is very place-specific, but um. Making. Making the McCaslin corridor. More of a destination.
You start by not calling it the McCaslin corridor and just calling it the McCaslin.
What are you talking about?
Well.
That's what it's branded as.
I mean, I I think that's, yeah. I I think that's one of the things that's missing west side of town, there's a lot of, but it's not. A place that coheres, I mean, some of the housing suggestions we made tonight are in that. But we don't say.
Yeah, can I ask, like, what are some things we could do to make it a destination?
Well, I think ours is cultural center, I think.
Yeah.
You know, it's having neighborhoods up there. And public gap of spots of various kinds.
We've talked, people talked about like utilizing uh the central parking lot for like, it it doesn't have to be that much, you're saying it's to your point of public events and gathering space. The farmer's market, that's on a different day, or events, things where people can feel like that is part of their community to engage in, it's not just the east side of town.
But so I would suggest that that's an that's an edit to DO three. Not an editor, that DO three right now deals with the CASL Boulevard corridor as a shopping destination. And maybe, maybe we want to change that to be something broader and call it something different.
That's it, I mean, it's good suggestion, I, this is kind of a sort of.
Yeah.
I didn't have a place to nest necessarily, I'm thinking of it in terms of like, but it actually is bigger, it it's a different. It encompasses both, you know, people coming to a place, people shopping to a place.
Yeah.
Recreation. And recreate, that would be the.
Any, all right, um. Yeah, so very question, um. Uh, so mostly under SB strategies. I mean, I, right, this is not an economic development plan, but I, I don't know, I felt like. A lot of strategies sort of call out things that are. Already sort of happening or we're expecting to happen. Um, or or they're like, like the D from the right inside where attracting more retailers. Of course, we'd love to do that, but like the issue is how, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I don't know if I should be playing, what I would like to see here is a little bit more. That that gets us like sort of how.
Um, yeah.
Maybe I'm maybe just expecting too much for this section of the plan, but that's how I felt.
If that's not really the goal on the state of strategy, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Um, yeah, we get it, yeah. It's probably beyond just strategic changes at this point, right, that were that I'm asking for. There's two, there's too many things to just say, edit this, delete this, add that, there's too much, there's, so we need to take another round at these edits, I think. Or to be effect, to have an effective conversation. So.
I think that is a good comment. Like, trying to dial in on the, on the, for the strategies, how to be a strategy that we could, now, we could actually sit down and think of like, if you run this strategy.
Yeah. And and then the, if we are going to have implementation matrix, it's not as specific as an implementation item either. And that, if we want all of these layers of plan, but we'll, maybe we'll play around with that and see if we even need an implementation matrix, that would benefit that. Which you usually add in these types of plans, otherwise you get criticized, so we'll. Um, and I know we're probably running out of steam here, so I'm trying.
Sure, we get, we get an opportunity for some public.
Yeah.
And if it's.
Okay. Yeah, so I I don't know how much more time you want to spend, I just have a couple more categories, um, if you want to try to touch on them real quick before public comment. So basically, we're, I guess we're just down to community service and infrastructure. And then if there's anything on that, and again, we'll take that critical look, strategies have to be meaningful.
I don't have a lot more improvements in the final section.
You know, some of this, um, like, I believe is going to. At least the core community service goals will be informed or discussion more, so. So I hesitate to say much of those. I I I think there's one accountability and transparency laws, um. Probably referring to the charter and topics provisions and other transparency provisions in there probably. Does that, sort of, that's a special place. The charter. Kind of what I'm thinking about.
Open space.
Specifically referenced in the works, this should be, you know, a more broad reference to agreeable. Or ways to move.
I think that was a stat color there, yeah, I think, yeah.
And CS one. Biased standards. I mean, I suppose I rather tomorrow, I mean, there should probably be some kind of call, call.
That you can afford.
That you can afford.
Qualify that.
Yeah, well, there's that. That might be an overall. Financials, sustainability. Um, one of the strategies that is, I think, missing in there, or at least it's. It. It's stated in different ways. If you don't want to in in C, but it's just strengthening. Intergovernmental relationships, which are incredibly important for transportation. For a lot of the things that we're talking about, housing. Transportation. So those two.
Two of those things, because what if we forgot one, like at the end? Unless you're going to qualify them for a share of the apartment.
I mean, I I think you could, you could split to see some of the others. And you you can figure it out, I'm sure. So sheriffs are right too. Under, or just say sheriff. Under strategy, kind of conscious strategy B. If we are calling out. Few different things, I would probably include community food shares. Nonprofits. Potentially.
Yeah. We should just keep finding all those, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And well said, I'm surprised that we're calling out. All of these different things, including partnering with the fire department, but there's no mention of. And under core community services, police department is the one that provides the safety. For all of our facilities, I'm looking over at this CS.
Yes, that's, yeah, all the others.
Hmm, yes.
Right, but we're calling out the red center, the library, we're not calling out.
Yes. It's useful, I think, yeah.
Good evening, CS one, I mentioned the police department in that one, yeah. With the community well-being and safety, right?
Also, just being specific, CS five. Strategy B, promote safety programs such as neighborhood watch and safe access school, consider expansion of flock safety cameras, implement its license plate detection program to all parts of the city. Do you want mention of flock cameras removed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could have been a community, I mean, it's, could have been a community comment, so. And and I asked our consultants, there, some people like him.
Before we look at the education and privilege, this literally says under C. Expand education for for programs currently available through the city of Louisville Police Department, such as vacation home checks.
I think that.
While you're on vacation.
Oh, my God, that's not how this reads, this reads like it's a vacation home here in Louisville that you're going to check on for me, like a bomb chillin' in Arizona in the winter, that's my primary. This is my vacation summer home in Louisville, that's how that reads. Home checks while on vacation versus a you need to be at home, it's highly.
We don't do it, but some, I mean. They tend to be more well off.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
The village changes, so.
I mean, I'm I'm hearing that we need to have something specific to PD.
Yes.
I think what disturbs me more is that the consultants didn't stand around listening here under court services. People talk about the Louisville Department of Safety to know to make sure it was listed in here.
Okay.
All right, so I, and so I know there's public comments still, that we can take public comment, um, then wrap up.
Yeah, how many do we have?
Rob, can you quit? I have nine people online. Six that are attendees, uh.
Oh, yeah, six are attendees. Thank you.
And then we have some cards. Um, I don't know if they're on, they were gonna go home and get on, oh, Mary Lou's.
Mary Lou's on. You want to go ahead, Matt?
There, well, you know. Did you say them?
Yeah.
I was standing here, best places.
Perhaps even up here, I'm just trying to get you.
Okay.
Can we know their.
Oh, yeah. Ta-da, oh, no, that's so fair.
Oh, aren't you guys gonna have, uh, Louisville code trivia, I think you should do that. I don't know how many people would play. I'm gonna face you. So I'm Matt Jones, Louisville, um, I want to talk to you about, I gotta turn down my hair, ranked up, I'm all, all the way I get. Burying myself too much. Uh, I'd like to talk to you about housing. And uh, what what I think is going, when we did the survey early in process. There were three scenarios, the biggest scenario came back, limited increase in housing, the smallest one was lots more housing. And that's not what I see what's happening here. Uh, I'm going to talk in general, generally about it, and then three uh, three examples from what we're just talking about today. So everybody wants more housing for people, I mean, we all know how how big a problem we have that. To do it with subsidized money is very difficult, the county housing authority is very strapped. Uh, to build market rate housing, you're not going to have housing for teachers and most of people to live. So it's a very hard goal to attain, and doing a lot of it in Louisville isn't going to do anything for that area that has three million people. Uh, so you may not attend, we may not reach goals that we want to reach by doing a lot of land available for housing. Secondly, residential doesn't pay as way, commercial does, industrial does. And we've talked about this issue for a very long time in this town, and my concern is we're shifting so much to residential, what's that do in the balance? Uh, the revenue coming in with the structural budget deficit that you already have. So I think going whole hog residential is a mistake. Um, and the third thing is people always talk about small town character, well, you can't have small town character if you're not a small town. And going the other way, I stole that from Bob Mucko, by the way, but going the other way, you have a problem, so the three examples I would talk about. The the density of eighteen to thirty units per acre in downtown residences, I'm afraid it's going to lead to teardowns. And it's not just this core, which is like the heart of it, but beyond that, and I don't think anybody in this town wants that. And so I think that's too much, it needs to back off. The area, the hillside of Davidson Basin, it's the way I think of it. The, it's on the, it's on the open space map. It's not coordinated, it seems with this plan, but I, I saw the map tonight, which is great, but. The designated use for that could be open space. And if you go to the rec center and get on a bike and you look out your window and have that beautiful view. You see that, you know, open hillside as part of Davidson Basin, how great it is. And they hate to see that that developed with a bunch of houses, especially taller houses towards the top of the basin. So it could be the designated use of open space. And the third thing is Redtail Ridge, I talked about this last time I talked to you. Uh, there's been so much acrimony over that, and I think people, once they started learning that all of a sudden. What was voted on finally is now going to have a bunch of residential, they're not going to like it. They're going to feel like, wait a minute, we came to a resolution, we finally solved this, why rip off this gap again? Now, that's the way I personally feel. That's three minutes, I think, so please lessen the the focus on residential. Um, a lot. I think it's going way too far overboard. I think some residential was critical, but I think it's going way too much, so please back off, and the three examples I think are concrete ways to. To go about that, and I will play the trivia game.
Um. Mary Lou Dobbins. Mary Lou, you're muted on your end.
There we go, thank you, thank you for uh doing all this, uh, you folks are very diligent and. I really appreciate the long hours that you are spending here on this, but I wanted to stand up for um. Uh, the uh affordable housing, uh, I'm part of Boulder County Together Colorado, one of the things we support. That people have the right to have safe and affordable and sustainable housing, and our concern is these two ballot measures. That are being added to the November ballot. Uh, one is uh adding impact fee uh for affordable housing, and the other is increasing the requirement for. Builders to have uh what we now have twelve percent, all the way up to thirty percent. Affordable housing, which sounds great on the outside, but it would cause uh really high requirements. Uh, that will not only kill affordable housing, but will discourage all future housing development, I think, and probably Louisville. Um, builders will see the surround, if this passes, it's going to circumvent, I feel like it might circumvent a lot of the work that you just did. On on this plan, uh, if you look at the surrounding city, uh, uh, they have. What we have right now, we have twelve percent in Louisville, now it's fifteen percent in Lafayette, probably fifteen percent superior. Uh, Boulder's twenty-five percent, but that's because they offset it with incentives and subsidies as well. And Longmont is twelve percent, so nobody is anywhere close to thirty percent. Uh, and and this, this is why I I am very concerned and and. Uh, and, and this, this is why I, I am very concerned and, and Together Colorado. Wanted to just stand up for this issue, uh, to make sure that there was an awareness of this and what those, uh. What those ballot measures might mean, uh, since they have enough signatures and they will be on the ballot. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
We have other couple comments. None of the remaining five. So for now, uh, about ten to ten. Just to. Kind of wrap up, um. I do think it's worth, um, you know, it would be worth seeing the next iteration. Of this, then, when, can you? Remind us when we're likely to see. The next iteration.
Um, there's a lot of work. To be done on it, uh, I think we have a really aggressive timeframe where we would bring something back to you in September. If we're, as well, that's what we're shooting for, um, like, as you've seen, a lot of this needs to be de-drafted and redone. To a large extent, it's not just little changes here and there. So, um, if things go well, we can shoot for September, but. That's best case.
I just say it was helpful to, to have, I know it's tough, and so, but.
Thank you.
I, the one, the one thought that I had, I, I, uh, take. Matt Jones' comment seriously, I, I think one of the things that is challenging, um. Is challenging as we're facing a housing crisis and. Um, and these categories, a lot of them you can refer to, to residential. And it, it, you know, I think we, there's that, and over and over as we're going through, but. And. I think it. As I'm thinking about it, one of the things we did last time around in, uh, comprehensive plans was to talk about. What our cap is on, on growth in terms of, um, population. And I don't know whether we need to do that here, that's something some people, I think, may want. Do you think about that?
Um, yeah, I know, I know we had one, I think, two comprehensive plans ago, um, I don't think you're allowed to do that anymore. There's state regular, state laws.
Um, there's just something, the, the balances that we're trying to strike, we just need to keep. Keep all of the things in mind, all the things. Um, including how it, uh, it's going to affect the economy, uh, one way or another, I think it's not. One of the things that we have talked about in the past, about things paying their way is they don't usually account for activation. And activation is a difficult concept, but it's there and everybody knows when we see it. And we have started to see it in places in Louisville. Um, and we know that to an extent, the growth in housing, residential. Parts of the. The parts of the map that we've included some residential that, uh, isn't curbed and zoned. Are gonna be necessary to continue the activation. So. How we, how we end up balancing it, when we come back and. And jiggle some of these categories to keep the ceilings. It's something, I guess, I'm. I'm certainly throwing around my own dead about how we, how.
I just wanna thank Seth for coming back, it's such a great proposal, I'm begging. You've done a lot to get it up to date and consider all of our.
Maybe get up, surprise us for. Certainly, we'll generate some other comments, and, you know, I guess the last thing I would say is, except that the public has comments. We invite those, probably each of us, as council people, as you continue to send in comments and so forth. Very useful.
So, um, yeah, so I think Jeff had a good question, I think this will look here, did you not, but like, like, we're planning a public open house and a planning commission review of the draft. And I think, um, you know, council, uh, we do another draft, or we can get. Planning Commission's recommendation on a draft, or bringing it back to you, and then you would have the benefit of planning commission. Hopefully doing some heavy lifting, further refining and calling before it comes back to you, potentially, if we put that in, or we come back. Before we. Make sure that planning commission hears some of the public input that we received as well, because not everybody always can make it to the planning, I just wanna make sure that they're. Conscient of what we're hearing from this council, when they're kind of getting their. They'll get all the written comments, certainly, um, and then all those reports that we have, all the written comments and.
The two milestones, we're just trying to figure out the formula, given that time could be of the essence with adoption schedule, yeah, with elections coming up. Planning Commission, but it also the public engagement window, and whether or not we should move forward with those. Before bringing another iteration back to you, or you'd rather see that. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts, but I guess that's what we're trying to assess, and we can go back to the drawing board and figure out the schedule. But you have any input on the timing and sequence thing of that, I think, helpful?
I guess I would say. Depends a lot on how the next draft comes back, the drafters, and the next draft. You guys get it, and that's dialed, like, that's, that's human balances, the input from council, system, but it's so on. I'd say to the planning mission. And if it's, if it's not that, we might sit right a lot of time by having, have us first. Just a thought, like, if it's not ready for, sort of, tweaks and, and polishing. There's still a lot of strokes to, to outline, which I hope isn't the case, and then I hope it comes back and it's.
For the public. What material are.
Well, I think the next engagement is giving them a full draft and all the background information. And, but really the full draft, really the public should be reviewing that.
So like the revise.
Where, yes, yeah, 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 the, yeah, this draft, again, like, we would never take this out for a public open house review. Um, and then, um. So, yeah, I mean, that, that was, that was all of our plan all along, is that we have a polished draft when it comes out to the public and starts the formal review process. Um, there's a lot of good comments, a lot to consider. So, I, it's just, uh, I, I think we need to, you know, work with city manager and you all to process this input. And then get back to you honestly over the next few days or week or two. To kind of tell you what we think we can realistically commit to with the amount of changes we need next.
And I think that can, that can help to provide any answer to the question about. Finding the. The timing of it and the substance of. Substance is more important, if we get a better, a better draft, it may not be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't wanna go to planning mission with a, a draft that's not raised for public consumption at all.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking maybe. Was the que, was the question about planning commission that. Going back now and getting it through that.
No, no, yeah, it's all right, so, so, so I, I think that, like, we fully expect to have a much better draft. When we, when we're done doing whatever we do, we get that next draft, the question was, is, once we have that draft. And we have confidence in it, are you okay with us going to planning mission to get their review? Or do you wanna look at it again before we do that? With the assumption that we think it's giving us the time to. Get a draft that we're happy with.
I think as soon as we would know what we're getting, from where the consultant is probably about a month from now, I would say, two weeks for us to. Not working the specific timeline, we're just general.
Do we have to make that decision from there?
Yeah, that's.
I think that's the right frame, city, you know, it's like, what, what can we back, should we have that choice? And, and I'll say, we got the question from a member of the public last weekend at our board meeting. Uh, about, you know, when, how's the, what's the timeline for the process and so on? And we said, you know, it'll be done when it's done.
Right.
Uh, and certainly that's my expectation, and, and as one of the three who's up for election, like, if it drags on past the election. I don't know, can lie about it. I, I'd rather have it be, be thoughtful and right, um, than.
Yeah, that's. I, I don't know, I'm sure about that, though, I mean, that's what I said at the beginning. But, I mean, I think we push as hard as we can, process forward. Yeah. But the process moving forward, maybe a step back and say, oh, this part we want to say. Whatever, or we need a little more time to write chess the next draft. So, we can just keep that up in there. Um, anything else, do we have a order, moving from staff?
No, thank you for taking the time and the input on this, the whole draft, I know we lost work, but all of you, I would show. Does it help make your next step easier?
Yes, definitely, I think so.
Yeah, because kidding us here was probably hard, so I appreciate it.
The next step will not be, we hope for that several, not be, because it's. Um, do we have a few for?
We're leaving the same setup since three Z and four L.